Firearms. Well, I thought about that when I said it. It's like, you know, shooting or it doesn't even look like a threat. Like, how is it? I don't know. It's like, oh, it was good. It was just a little. Oh, it was good. It was like, oh, it was good. Really, it was really good. It was like, oh, it was 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 good. Or, it's about there. It was like, oh, it was good. I don't know. I don't put this one to get that one. Why, man? I don't know. 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 I hear fire. Yeah, sure. One. Sure. 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 What's the plan of the year? 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 We can start now. How y'all doing? How you doing? Hey, Jim. Good morning. How's everybody doing? Good morning. How you doing?
Good. How about you?
I'm hanging in, man.
Good.
I'm good. How are you? 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 I'm good. You're in the whole thing? Oh, no. Just a good guy. Every time ever. Very cool. And it didn't take my thunder. That's how we happen. We got your credit. Do you have any? We should have this on. Thank you. Yeah, there's a little more on the table. I know some, but I'm always ready to do this. I had it earlier. I'm sorry. Oh, great. Yes. 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 Yeah, there's a little more on the table. Yes. 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 Oh, yeah. You're a fine. Yes. Yes. I apologize. I apologize. Yes. 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 Yes.[485.36]
So that we don't get any interruptions. Mr. Wilkins, any questions for the chief?
No, great job, chief, I appreciate you.
Commissioner Albright.
No, we do appreciate you, all the calls we text you and things that we ask you and you're always in great response to us, but appreciate you, all of your things.
Commissioner Wade.
Chief, you were talking in there that we need to go ahead and start working on our succession plans for retirements. What's the next, do we have any retirement's plan for the next 12 months that you're aware of?
Possibly, we have one that can go December if he chooses. But over the next three years, probably lose some people to retirement.
Do you have any anticipation this coming budget year to add any additional police officers to patrol?
Um, not this year, I think there was one that we had talked about amongst our staff, we had to talk to city manager about that. But I think in the next year, I think definitely, I think maybe one this year could be investigative side, because we've seen it, we know we have a drug problem. And I think that that leads to a lot of the violent crimes and such things that we have happened there. So maybe in that direction this year, but then next year start adding to patrol.
Thank you.
Mayor Proten.
In 2019, when I got sworn in on this board, I remember Chief King saying they were down one guy, then they were down two guys. To hear you say that you are fully staffed, it just makes me really, really happy. Apparently, you're doing something because these police officers are signing on with us. And I appreciate you so much. And I'm so glad that we have a great police department, and I will always say we have a great police department. You've taken us in a little bit of a different direction, but I hear from citizens all the time about how much they appreciate what's going on. Of course, I hear the other stuff too, but we're not gonna talk about that. I thank you for taking on the City of Creedmore Police Department. I hope you never leave us till you retire. I will plan a huge party if I'm still alive when you retire. But um, thank you for all you do, and please extend it to all the police and the dispatchers.
Thank you.
Chief, on behalf of the citizens and of course this board, we thank you for the hard work you've put in. I'll be honest with you, I didn't think we'd ever find anybody that would be as good as Chief King was. And he had his pluses and minuses as in you do too, but we could put the two of you in a jar and pull you out and we'd be great either way. So thank you so much for the hard work.
And speaking of Chief King, I would like to say, you know, coming in, he has been a great mentor for me. He's always been available. If I text him, it's no more than five minutes before he calls or something like that. But you know, I feel like I walked into the perfect situation and traveling and going to trainings and with other chiefs and just handed stuff that they deal with. I didn't have to do that here in Creedmore. I mean, everything was in order and literally I had to, he didn't leave his shoes as I've said before. He encouraged me to walk in my own shoes and I just believe and like I told him in our first meeting or first staff meeting that, you know, I think if you treat people with care and compassion and you show the citizens, then we'll be fully staffed. And that's, we're just looking forward to moving forward in the future. But thank you.
Again, thank you for your report.
Yeah, Chief Fisher, Chief Fisher just is on the way, so we can go straight ahead to the finance director lead things.
All right. Next item then will be financial update and projections, city finance director lead things.
Good morning, mayor, board, commissioner, city manager. Before you, I bring, before you, our financial update, of course, I gave you a January update at the legislative meeting on Tuesday. So today is basically just a brief update, show you as far as where we stand, projections for the next five years. And just to touch a little bit on the Avalon taxes for this upcoming year due to the revow. Okay. So of course, on June 6th, 2023, you all adopted your FY24 general fund budget in the amount of $5,553,712 appropriated, $312,716 of fund balance. As of, as of January 31st, the total fund balance appropriated was $512,739 with one ten amendment, the $28,800 that was approved at the meeting on Tuesday. So currently, the revised FY24 general fund budget is currently $6,119,216. And on the right side, you see the categories and how that budget is broke down. Balance as of June 30th, general fund, unassigned fund balance was at $9.3 million, Powell Bill, $582,755. Stormwater is at $493,145. Capital reserve fund is at $182,686. The water economic, economic development fund is $390,977. The sewer economic development fund is at $549,552. And this slide just shows you the percentage of the breakdown of the revenues that was budgeted. Of course, your biggest revenue for the city is Avalon tax at 60%. And then you see your other categories on the left side where you see the fund balance appropriated was 8.2% of expenditures, of revenues, I'm sorry. So we took a look at the expenditures, spent that on the revenues, it shows your, breakdown of your categories for expenditures, police being your larger dispenager. So on this slide, you see the projected fiscal year in '23, where we would end at June 30th, 2024. Revenues projected will be at $5,932,402. Expenditures projected would be $5,827,775. So you're looking at adding $104,000 to your fund balance at the end of fiscal year. So here are the revenue projections for the next five years. One big thing to look, notice is the Avalon taxes. That is due to the revow that has taken place at Grand County. And one thing, just a quick to, I will touch bases on this later on in the PowerPoint. That number can change due to what we have to do as a municipality whenever a revow is done, and that is calculating the revenue neutral tax rate that I will calculate to you all and the budget officer will present it to you all during your own budget work sessions and when he present the budget message. So that's just one thing I just want to point there. That is the Avalon revenue if the tax rate stays at 61.5%. The next thing I want to show is, I'm gonna go on to the next slide, having a question. The next slide is the revenue assumptions where I break it down. Of course, the, I just touched base on the Avalon tax revenues, it increased by 74% in 2025 and is held steady through the projected period. The tax base increased by 74% after the revow was completed. Sales tax revenue has increased around 5% each year. Investment earnings has increased 47% in FY24. So that's why you see a larger projected number in your investment earnings. And I held that constant throughout the projected years because as far as talking to the other municipalities and at the meetings, the percentage, percent for that we are earning in investment earnings is probably right now, that is what it's going to be, the highest it's going to be for a while. So I'm gonna keep that constant. And of course, if we generate more, that's always a plus in the upcoming years. Permits and fees is held constant due to no projected growth. There's really been no projected growth in the permits and fees over the last previous year, so I held that constant. The restricted intergovernmental, governmental revenue is held constant. And that is the contract that we have with the Grand County Schools for the SROs, so that $150,000 is the contract amount. And that unrestricted governmental revenue is held constant also as well due to no projected growth. So if we go over to the expenditures, and you could take a look and see how it is broken down by each department. And there was, I'm gonna go to the, the next slide shows the assumptions as well. So in the projections, there's no included personnel. And one more thing to note, if you look at the FY25, FY25 is just a projected number, this is not, of course, this column will change once we get the actual budget requests from the department. So when I bring back this to you all at the budget work session, you're gonna see a different number because it would include the actual requested amount and then either the city manager's recommended budget to you all. So there is no new personnel included in the projected years. Salary increases no more than 3%.
Oh, your microphone. No, mine's not.
It's all right. Salary. All right. So just to repeat, salary increases no more than 3% for each year. Majority of that includes the merit increases that can be given to employees from year to year based on their performance evaluations. Capital expenses or projects are not included in the projected years. And as you will see, there was an increase in the fire protection line for the Creedmore Volunteer Fire Department is due to increase in, to the tax base from the revow as well. And there, the city appropriates a rate of 6%, a six cent, I'm sorry, six cents per $100 valuation within the city to support fire and rescue operations. So due to that tax base going up and the revow, there, of course, the appropriate amount that we give to the fire departments will increase as well along with the lease pay, the payment that we give to them for the Nater truck. So in this slide, this just shows your over or under in the revenues and expenditures. So if you see, with the current tax rate that we have, you're gonna see a large gap in your revenues and expenditures. So FY25, you're looking at 1.9, FY26, 1.8. You see that continuously kind of going down based of the situation for us, there was no allocations, no really, no development can be done until that works, uh, for losses deadline. But one more to note again, that this number can change depend on the tax rate that the city adopts in this FY25 budget. Okay, so this is the North Carolina General Statute, 159-11E, where it talks about the revenue neutral tax rate. And it states each, in each year in which a general reappraisal for real property has been conducted, the budget officer shall include in the budget for comparison purposes a statement of the revenue neutral property tax rate for the budget. The revenue neutral property tax rate is the rate that is estimated to produce revenues for the next fiscal year equal to the revenue that would have reduced for the next fiscal year by the current tax rate if no reappraisal had occurred. To calculate the revenue tax, revenue neutral tax rate, the budget officer shall first determine a rate that will produce revenues equal to those produced for the current fiscal year and then increase the rate by a growth factor equal to the average annual percentage increase in the tax base due to improvements since the last general reappraisal. This growth factor represents the expected percentage increase in the value of the tax rate due to improvements during the next fiscal year. The budget officer shall further adjust the rate to account for any annexation, de-annexation, merger, or similar event. So in my calculation, and basically what I go to the process of what I would, I do, I go all the way back to when the last revow was done, get the tax rates for each of those years, get the average, and add that to the tax, the tax rate that will produce the same revenue as the previous fiscal year if a reappraisal, if the revow wasn't done. And that would give you your revenue neutral tax rate and then me and the city manager will adjust that based on the need for projects and other items. So of course, we'll go into deeper conversations during the budget season and once I give that calculation to the city manager to include and give the budget message, we will present it to you all for discussion. And one thing is, and just to note, General Statute says you don't have to adopt that tax rate, it just has to be publicized to the citizens for their, for their knowledge and transparency. All right, this just shows the 74% increase that was stated, the tax base for, what the tax base would have been for the revow for this upcoming budget prep was $385,622,634. Due to the revow, the tax base is $669,700, $669,728,748. That concludes my presentation. Please feel free to ask any person.
Commissioner Wade.
Come back, chief.
Okay. Commissioner Wilkins. Commissioner Albright. Mayor Proten.
So the Powell Bill Fund, the numbers on the Powell Bill Fund, is that all the money that we've got this year on the Powell Bill Fund? Or does that represent the money that has been spent out of that fund also? That's the current balance?
FY82?
Yeah.
FY82 was the fund balance at the end of FY23.
Of course, we received the allocation, the two allocations for FY24 that's not included in this amount.
Okay.
So you'll get updated once I do my Powell Bill expenditure report that I do at NCDOT each year, the report expenditures and interest earnings. And earlier this week, I just met with the West Director regarding expenditures for that due to the change in allocation, how much we can have on hand for Creedmore due to us going over the 5,000 population, which is, it brought it down to we can only keep on hand the sum of the last 10 allocations. So there are some expenditures we have to.
Use.
Dig and dish fiscal year just to give us a defiance.
Okay.
Of NCDOT.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Lee, I know this has been a learning experience for you as far as being in Creedmore. Done an excellent job, and on behalf of the board, we appreciate all you do.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, at this time, we're going back up just a little bit and recognize Chief Billy Fisher. And Matt Foley has changed, but we'll, we'll recognize the other Fisher in the room too. So if y'all would like to get up and give your presentation, that'd be fine.
Good morning, we had to make some changes. Matt had to go into work today, so he was not able to be here this morning, but Billy Fisher, Creedmore Fire Department, who lives 605 Lake Road. Good morning, commissioners, mayor, everyone in the room, and the staff members as well. We're going to just be brief, I think Matt has sent over a budget, he had fixed up already, he sent that over to you, you have that. I've got some information he's gonna cover, he's gonna be the spokesperson this morning for us. He is over the actual budget and finances of the station, him and Matt work on that along with our captain officers. So he's got almost the numbers and everything. One thing I did want to ask city manager, Mr. Turner, do you, I sent you, got your email for the water and pipe repair and the road bed and everything? And that was $22,920 and I think 81 cents. So that's due from the fire department and that'd be due the 16th February, correct?
Correct.
Okay, we've got that information, we've got that invoice and everything, we'll be check for that, finish up that off. And that wraps up everything, correct? Everything's been completed.
Yes, sir, and I might add that the report that you guys give us to county is in so much detail, and we fine just to submit that version instead of doing a whole done version?
Yeah, we'll, we'll do that now. We don't have the one for this year, the new numbers yet from the county and from the commission, but we will definitely get you that. We can get you last year's now if you would like that.
I've got last year's.
Okay, you do have last year's, okay. We get the new one, we'll give you that one over two. And it'd be, believe me, it'd be fine to do both the same and just kind of give one to county and one to the city. So it covers, and it covers all the numbers, including the numbers from like when we get money from Wake County as well, which is on the budget, but that's also in there, the grant money, our unrestricted money, everything's in there. So yeah, that'd be fine, that way we do one little budget. Okay. All right. Any questions for me or Ryan, do you have questions after?
That's what I prefer to do.
Yeah.
Good morning, everybody. So I'll be pretty brief. Basically, what we wanted to do, Chief Foley is in care today, he's gotta make a living, I guess he can't be here every day like I feel like we are. But he, me and him sat down and we just wanted to go over a couple of things we've done with the increase. As you know, last year was kind of our first budgeted year on the new contract system that we all worked out. And just kind of what we've done with the increase and what we're planning on doing with the new increase and kind of where we're at and where we're going. So since this contract last year, we were able to fund several new initiatives that we've been working towards for many years. Our overall goal is to have shorter response times and better service delivery. For the first time, we've been able to catch up on a lot of equipment that was outdated and ensure we're actually able to maintain a maintenance standard and NFPA standard on a lot of things that we haven't been able to do in the past. Our first priority, of course, was adequate personnel to respond to calls. We've been much better able to staff our station during the daytime with at least two personnel that are properly equipped with PPE and training. For the first time ever, all our personnel now have two sets of NFPA compliant turnout gear to ensure that they are not only ready to respond, but they're much better protected from job-related cancer, which if you do any fire research right now, that is the big thing. In the past, if you had a set of dirty gear and we got another call, tough luck, we're not gonna let our citizens down. Put your dirty gear on, you go to work. Thanks to this increase, now all our members have two sets of PPE. We have a new engine on order that should be delivered January of 2025. That is set up specifically for our emergency response within the City of Creedmore. It is a shorter, more agile engine, it's shorter in height, shorter in length, giving us more of a better turn of radius for the tighter subdivisions than their streets. And it is equipped with a 2,000 GPM pump, that's our largest ever, to provide adequate flows for the modern-day construction. It's, it's set up for current building construction, our current water supply, but also future building development, some of the, some of the housing that we see coming and just some of our own estimates of where building construction is going. This new engine is set up for that. It's got a low hose bed, lower ladders, and a lot more hose options because a thousand square foot ranch house is a very different fire attack than a 3,500 mini mansion, as you can probably understand. This year, another big initiative for us is working on our technical rescue certification at a department level. This is a 120-hour class and it's quite, not only mentally intensive, it's labor-intensive, it's a lot of work, but we are now able to provide the City of Creedmore with a technical rescue team that can mitigate all hazards. We have 11 members trained to technical rescue or certification, which allows us not only to respond to that, it also allows us the capability to apply for more grants. Some examples of our TR capabilities include high and low angle rope rescue, vehicle machinery and ag extrication, structural collapse, wilderness rescue, and surface water rescue. Thanks to the funding, grants, and generous donations from our community, we have also been able to purchase respectable complement equipment to mitigate these situations. I personally work for Big City and the guys on my truck are pretty jealous of the rope rescue equipment we got because we were able to purchase some really nice stuff that would make our job very easy. Now, how do we improve from here? Our number one and most pressing issue for improvement of service is to be able to build a station to have 24/7 staffing. Just to give you some real numbers, 96% of the time, we put somebody en route within two minutes. And this means, this is not eight to five, this is outside of the time when we have people staffed. When we have people staffed at the station, we're out of the station in less than a minute and a half, 98% of the time, which is well above our industry standard. I'm speaking of the times when we're at home with our families, to be able to get somebody out, as y'all know, the big loud siren goes off. If it's not somebody out of the house, it goes off again in two minutes. Sometimes it goes off multiple times for other reasons, so just because you hear sirens twice, don't assume we just ain't responded with anybody. But sometimes we can't get out of radios, but on actual real numbers, we get somebody out in under two minutes. The problem is, from there, they have to travel from their home to the station, transfer into the truck, get the truck out of the station. We get a full-time building, we can staff all the time, now we go to getting a truck out of the station 98% of the time, all the time. That, that's our goal, that's what we're working to. Two to three minutes of travel time from home to station can literally be the difference in life and death, and we understand that, so that's what we're working towards. We spent 120,000 of our hard-earned savings from fundraisers and generous donations working to develop plans and make this project shovel-ready. We've also reached out to the Grand County Fire Commission and our council representative, Commissioner Russ May, and we'll be requesting funding assistance for a station from them as well. We have been putting in for grants and we're in contact with our state representatives, if some of you know as well, at the state level to pursue every funding avenue possible. Again, this is our number one priority. Some other large future expenses we know we're looking at are radios, SCBA's, and bottles. Twenty of our radios will no longer be supported as of 2025, and we need to replace them. Our SCBA's are in need of replacement two days as well. They are 15 years old and according to NFPA standards should be replaced on a 10-year replacement cycle. This is a cost of about $250,000 and another item we're gonna be applying for grant money through FEMA. Finally, with all the parks, greenways, the walkways, the city's development, we're looking to purchase a side-by-side for emergency, emergency response as well as for use at public events. These are the most efficient and safest way to remove injured people and locate lost people in these areas. It will allow us to provide fire protection on a small, a small scale as well for areas around the lake and other remote properties. The price of this equipment is roughly around $30,000. These are just some of our larger future expenditures we're looking at as well as the day-to-day that's covered by our budget that includes all the stuff we do now. Thank y'all very much for your time and support. I can say as somebody who's followed along since my day in M.A., chief, y'all are by far the most supportive board, mayor, city council we've ever had. And it is truly not lost on me because there have been many struggles and I appreciate y'all doing that, all the way back from Commissioner Wilkins, Wilkins helping us get in our ladder truck to now, we truly appreciate it. So with that, does anybody have any questions for me or Dan?
Commissioner Albright, any questions, comments? Mr. Wilkins?
Yes, me and Commissioner Kaczewski have some conversations, but since I can't get my iPad to update, I'm gonna defer to her for what we discussed.
Okay. Commissioner Wade.
I'm a little bit biased because I've been a member of this department and supported our citizens before I became a member of this board. I will echo the sentiments that Captain Fisher just stated, that it's been a pleasure to, to work with this board and also with the citizens to understand that it's our goal in the City of Creedmore and the Dutchville Fire District in general is to provide 24/7 coverage for our citizens. The biggest thing that we need to understand is the volunteer fire service is great. It, it builds character, it offers an extra ability for men and women to, to train and learn something new and support each other, but also understand that the volunteer fire service is just that. It is volunteer. And the nature of today is we all have to have full-time jobs that carry us away from the City of Creedmore and the- that carry us away from the city of Creedmoor and the area of Graham County in the southern end, and we have families to support and things of that nature. We, not only as a county, but as a city or municipality, I think have fallen behind of the importance of providing fire and safety services in general and need to make sure that we are there to support these endeavors to make sure people are in place to be there when we call for help. Because we have a community that is dependent upon these services and we have an EMS system that is dependent upon the volunteer fire service to help them when necessary to assist moving patients to ambulances to get them out of the county or other ambulances coming in from out of county and assisting them where they need to go. We have some decisions we're going to have to make either as a board, as a county, as citizens with our tax base of how we need to support the fire rescue services, not only in Creedmoor, but in the county in general, especially this area and Brassfield who are experiencing extreme influx of people moving here. And with that being said, just understand that when these numbers have changed and we've gone from, if you go back and look at numbers that the city gave to the fire department and to what we are now and what's also projected. I mean, if you look at it, it's projected that they're going to receive with the ladder truck payment a half a million dollars. That's a lot of money, yeah, it is, it is a lot of money. But think of all the years that we've held things together with bubble gum and duct tape. We deserve better than what we've had in the past, and we need to make sure we keep moving forward. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Proten.
Brian, great presentation. How many, to fully staff, if we fully staff the fire department, okay? Exactly, I know we're not going to put all 28 volunteers full-time. There's still going to be, it's going to be split, volunteers and paid. How many paid employees will you need to do 24 hours? Is it nine?
On a very basic level, and these are just based off what we've discussed, we would really need to sit down to give you actual numbers, so please don't hold our feet to the fire.
I won't.
But to run the least staffing possible, and this is on the bottom end, a normal staff truck is four people. If you're going to run 24/7, you've got to have three shifts. So that right there would be 12 people, and then somebody's got to be in charge of those people. So a pay chief, that's 24 more. So on a minimum, 13 people gets you started down that road. Because the issue is, with two people is a great start, but due to ASHA and two-in, two-out standards and things of that nature, you're still very, very dependent upon a volunteer showing up to really get fire. Yes, we can spray water from outside, but that's not what we're there for. If we're making interior attack and interior searches, you've got to have four people.
Right.
So that's where that number comes from, four on a truck.
Isn't there a rule that you have to have a base of 15 people for a call?
So for fully staffed structure fire, yes.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And there's what they call the effective firefighting force, and you have to get to that number in so many minutes. And that's the NFPA thing, that's also ISO thing, which as y'all know, ISO the better. We do the better rates offering search for the city. How we have such a good ISO rating is our volunteers show up, just to put it plain.
I have a scanner in my house and I know about.
I hear our voices a lot.
I do, I do. I can pinpoint them, exactly. So I think Chief just said something about whatever you send to the county for your budget, just send us another copy of it. I don't want you to have to keep doing two and recreating the wheel, just do it once. So I see on this budget that for the county that you submitted, the 23-24 budget, it says employee-paid reimbursement and Graham County reimbursement. Have you guys applied for that 70,000 yet to get reimbursed?
Yes, we replied for the 20,000 when I just got the check yesterday for the equipment.
Okay.
For staffing.
Okay.
And I've also got the numbers turned in for that paid for what we've already paid out for staffing during the day, yes.
Okay, good, good, good.
It's on a monthly basis, so like as we just finished January, now that we have paid out, I'll send it to Jason Revis at EM, and then it starts that. So it's a monthly.
Okay.
Not like you apply it once and they just send us the money.
Yeah, no, you do it monthly so you can maintain it.
They like it monthly now. They've got, I think a couple of hours doing it maybe every two weeks, but they like it monthly and that's what we're going to get on the monthly. It's good to hear you go to the nurse management office and they check everything.
So you got the save for grants last year?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that something you apply for every single year?
So it's only, it's for a four-year period, and we've applied for it multiple times and we finally got it, fortunately. And that helps pay for pay-per-call, which is a little different than staffing. That's more, to put it on a real level, it's $15. That's enough to hopefully get the volunteer out of bed at 3:00 a.m. for a fire call. That's what this is, it's just a little bit to put back in their pocket for, hey, or get up and dinner with their family, a little, yeah. And we do mileage reimbursement at the end of the year. That's part of this budget as well to cover their gas, their maintenance on their vehicles, something like that. We do that at national standard, and if you look in the personnel portion of the budget, you'll see that as well. That's what that money is based on. Well, it's not broken down here, excuse me, I'm a little, because personnel is all on the 152, let me go to that actual budget.
You don't have to break it down, Brian, it's okay. I just want to make sure that you applied for that money and you got it.
It's under volunteer reimbursement and under personnel.
Okay, okay. I'm glad to see that there's a little bit of reimbursement for the chiefs now that did not used to be on the budget. I went back in a couple of years. I'm glad that the money that the city gives you has finally made a difference. I remember, I remember $152,000 a year. And when I look at the numbers and I look at how much and I listen to what you've done with that money, I'm grateful that we've done it. Now I have one more question for you. Commissioner Way and I have talked to the school board representative for our area. I went to the school and mentioned something to the leader of the department that would provide fireman training at the high schools for Graham County. Do you believe that that will make a difference? If we could get kids trained right out of school?
If they could come out of school with their certificates, absolutely, that'd be helpful.
And this is being done in other counties, correct?
Yes, ma'am, it is. I know Durham County does it.
Okay, okay, sorry, Stan.
But I will say to their credit, it's a very complex issue because there's always certain, there's a certain portion they can't do until they're 18 by state standards.
Right.
They can't be in any live fires until 18, but they can take everything but that. We would definitely put them far down the road. And then that would put it where we could spend a couple of weeks with them and they'd be ready to answer calls.
And you have certified trainers at the fire department?
Yes.
In your fire department? Okay, all right. What, do you think any of them would be willing to do it? If the school board reached out to you and said, hey, we're going to do the program, do you have a trainer? Do you think?
I think it depends on the time constraints because how it works in Durham County, the high schools that I know that do it are retired captains and battalion chiefs from the city of Durham.
Okay.
That's their full-time gig now.
Okay.
It's not on-the-job people. Now, on-the-job people may go and help some.
Right.
But, because it's a pretty large time.
Okay, okay, all right. Because I don't want to push something if it's not going to help.
Yeah, it would definitely have to be somebody who either is in the retirement phase of life or that would be their only other endeavor. It would be harder to do much more than that.
Okay, all right.
The, just congratulations on the job you're doing. I couldn't be more proud of all of you. Referring back to Mayor Proten, these students though, you could bring them in, and I hate to use the word grunt work, but bring them in and help in the fire station even if they didn't go. Or do they have to have a certain certification to even be in the fire station?
So we don't really work that way because of certification and the insurance standards. And honestly, it's almost, some of the problem in the past with the volunteer side is the juniors and the new members were treated like grunts. And then they turn 18 and it's, well, we've been treated like junk, I'm out. So we really try not to do that. Plus, anything outside of the firehouse other than, if they're just there, they're going to get to help clean up, you know, help wash fire trucks, that's nothing that is going to really grab their interest. The training part is what gets them hooked. And then once they turn 18 and they can actually go to their first fire truck, that's what, you know, that's really what makes the difference.
But doing, cleaning the fire trucks and doing that, that's part of being the, part of the fire department.
A hundred percent. We just don't want that to be looked at like this is all I'm going to get you to.
Right, but to bring them in once in a while and kind of work with them.
Well, next thing you have there as well is when you've got volunteers from the woods or you've got COVs coming to call. Now you've got additional kids that possibly might come to this call and they're not even like, we're in the lab teams to do that. And when you get on the fire ground, what can they really do, especially with the structural fire? Because it can't be near the live fire. It's an accident, you know, on the highways and roads, because that's how you say it. I mean, look at our workers today, they got near field every year, you know, the barricades and flashing lights and everything else going on. So it's so little amount of stuff that you do really on the station, which is what's, they're doing the grunt work. Because we don't turn them off, we want to do bolted engines, encourage them, and training would be the first step.
Well, my idea there was to, you know, that's a level that they need to get used to. And since they can't go to a fire, this would be a good stage to get them prepared for that. Commissioner Wilkins, I believe you had a question?
Yes, question. If we're able to do that training, is that something you would be absorbing your budget? Or we have to look at Dr. Winborn to help you with that?
So the way, and I'm just speaking on Durham County because that's the only one I've been. The way they do it is run through the school. Now, there's some partnership there where the county fire departments provide old equipment and spays out, stuff like that, because them not being able to go to live fire, it does not, it doesn't matter. And our really, our really big budget increase would be if they needed a truck for a day, us to bring the ladders out, us to bring hose, stuff like that. I mean, the cost on us would most likely be minimal. I know the instructors are Durham County employees, things like that. So it's not really fire department-based, if that answers the right question.
It does, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Again, thank you very much. Just know that even a short period of time, we've come a long way since about three or four years ago. And that was kind of a dark time in our community as far as the fire department went.
Well, last again, Commissioner Way for sitting down with us and senators and being able to connect with them, we've already started looking at some of those areas and I've got your question, you can send it to me for a grant. Obviously, some of them we've applied for a safer grant, but others we are definitely looking at because if we can get 50 cents out of somebody, we'll take that as a fire department's charge. And if you go back and read the historical, Bob Ross and those who ran, you've got 50 cents, 25 cents a dollar are a fire department.
Well, thank you, gentlemen, for taking your time to come here today. Stay safe out there.
Please, it's a bet to all firefighters in these departments that we do appreciate what you do and we understand that you take on the daily day.
They can tell the big difference. I'll leave y'all with that, there's no doubt, and we appreciate it.
And he does talk.
Nine months, I don't want to meet you. I like you.
That's a good point.
All right, at this time, we will recognize Dr. Stan Winborn, who is superintendent of Graham County Schools. At you.
Well, good morning, Mayor, council members.
Good morning, sir.
Manager, good to see you all today. I have a one-pager if I can.
Yes, I'm on it, don't be scared.
I don't want to get spit on.
Well, it certainly is good to see you all, and I thank you so much for the invitation. I want to thank city manager Turner for the close partnership that we've developed over the past several months since I took on this role. We have the privilege of having lunch together occasionally and get to talk about a lot of different issues. And one recent conversation led to an invitation to come here today. So I've got a one-pager just with some highlights, and I thought I would go down and report out some of the important things that we're working on and then just provide time to answer any questions that you may have. So first of all, just want to draw your attention to our mission and vision. Our mission reads that every student will reach his or her full potential, prepared to thrive in a changing world. And our vision is that we will empower every student every day. Since I took on this role, I've adopted a sort of a motto for our staff, and that is focusing forward. We have a lot of work to do to improve things in our school district, but we also have a lot of success that we can build on. You'll notice at the very top, under that colored logo of Focus Forward, there's another phrase that I've borrowed from our state, and that is esse quam videri. That means to be rather than to seem. And I've really urged our staff to embrace that as we engage in our work this year. I believe that, you know, you've got to deal with the facts and you've got to confront the challenges head-on without sugarcoating them. And so that's what we're committed to doing. And I believe building partners, partnerships with folks like you are a huge part of that because we certainly can't do it alone. But our strategic plan is built on five different principles. The first is the safe and healthy facilities. And I just want to start, this is where the bedrock of our partnership, the city and the school district lies. Chief Willis here has been just an amazing partner in supporting the schools in Creedmoor. And of course, he's also a member of our safety task force and has been attending those as well. And that's district-wide, and he attends and provides really important information, good feedback. You know, he brings a lot of expertise to the table. So I just want to thank you personally for all you do for us and your staff. Your SROs are outstanding and do an amazing job for our schools. You know, those SROs, they're not just there to be an armed law enforcement presence. I mean, they're really building relationships with these kids. And I mean, you guys know, you see that with Officer Wallace and Officer Peace. They get to know these families and it's just a wonderful sort of extra layer of support in our schools. So I thank you very much for that. Under safe and healthy facilities, I imagine you're all interested to get an update on what's going on with Holley. As you may or may not know, we applied for a large state grant. It was for $52 million, and our county commissioners were very supportive in that. They agreed to provide an additional matching amount of 5% so that we could apply for that grant. We have not yet received news. We expect to hear something sometime this month. But the plan that we submitted to the state was essentially to rebuild about three-fourths of the Holley campus. So we would demolish most of the older buildings that were built in the 60s and even some parts of it that were built in the 80s and 90s and keep that new kind of cafeteria area open. But the twist to our latest proposal was that it would include a portion of the property for community recreational use. So the concept drawings had a large, full-size turf field, walking track, pavilion, and separate restrooms for the community. So that was really, I think, a wonderful thing. And I'm committed to, you know, supporting our county commissioners and trying to make sure that our schools are available to the community. We have, you know, we have so many resources that folks can use after hours, weekends, in the summer. We just need to find a way to, you know, strike a balance to protect those facilities so they're not abused and that there's safe interaction with the public and our kids. But we're very interested in that. So any questions about the grant? I'll just pause right there, see if anyone had any specific thoughts or if you've heard anything or wanted some clarification about that.
Commissioner Kaczyzki?
This is, this is the third time you guys have applied for this grant?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, are you feeling more positive about this time?
I think the odds are 50/50. Um, I think the odds are fifty-fifty, to be honest. Um, you know, we had our state superintendent come and visit us, um, recently.
Yeah.
I think some of you were there and, um, she has a say in the matter and so we wanted her to be able to see the facilities firsthand.
Okay.
She, it's just so competitive and, um, there's so much need across the state. I think, um, it's probably ten times, uh, the, not, the applicant amount versus the actual available funds.
Okay.
So, we've announced a couple of grants already and these, these have been mostly in smaller counties, um, that have just a handful of schools.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Wilkins?
Doctor, you mentioned Holly, I mean, Holly.
Yes, sir.
Any group plans to do anything with South Granville High School, upgrade it at all?
Yes, well, you know, a lot of that is driven by available funds, um, but right now, we are working to renovate the, um, what is currently the ROTC slash gym, uh, excuse me, weight room, um, thanks to a matching grant from the county. So, if you're not familiar with the campus, this is a large metal building kind of behind the ag shop, so that's getting a full makeover. Um, a little more than a half million dollar renovation there, so it's, it's gonna get completely, uh, redone on the outside and inside. Basically, we're, we're just gonna keep the frame of the building and redo the whole thing, but that should be very nice. But, uh, yeah, we, I mean, it's got a lot of need where, you know, we need to, those take, those parking lots need to be repaved, um, there's just a lot of beautification that needs to happen, a lot of upgrades and, um, again, we're just, funding is driving that.
Just want you to keep it on your radar, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Proten?
So, um, Mr. Winborn, why is the weight room just being done now? That money was approved last year.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, superintendent changeover issues, I don't know, but it's, there's a program at the high school, there's a class of weight training.
Yes.
And the money from the county commissioners was approved in February of last year and here we are in February this year and we're just getting the work started. Was it not followed up on and you're taking it? I, I'm just trying to understand.
Well, part of that is the case. Um, we did have a, a changeover in our director of maintenance. Mike Carroll is our new, uh, director of maintenance and he's been on since I took, I took on this role. I placed him there, um, so we did have a change. Um, but part of it also is driven by a change in our approach to the project. We decided to do a more comprehensive renovation, um, because once we got in there, we figured if, I mean, to, to use the phrase of putting a lipstick on a pig, but we, we really said, if we're gonna do this, let's do it right. So, we had to back up and we got some engineers involved. We now have engineered drawings and, and everything is out for bid. So, um, we're hopeful that we can get, uh, a lot of this knocked out by the end of the summer and have it ready for the kids next, next year. But you're right, there has been a delay and it's been frustrating.
So, does that include new equipment?
Um, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I have to, I have to check on that. I think that's probably budget allowing and I certainly would love to get, you know, a lot of that is very old that's in there.
Okay.
But our priority's gonna be with the structure and sort of the, the area around it as well, because as you know, that back parking lot is really torn up and
Yeah.
There's some old fences and things that we need to clean up and so forth.
And then at the joint meeting with the county commissioners and the board of education that was talked about, and, and the county manager mentioned it and he hit it right on the head, these buildings have been neglected for way too many years and I'm glad that the county is offering to try and assist on that. And that's why when we talk about any renovations of Holly, Mike, and this is gonna come out a little blunt, but I'm gonna say it, if you can't maintain what you have, why would you think of doing something new?
That's a good point and others have raised that same question. I would, I would just say that this is the direction our board has decided to go in at this time.
Well, you've got a very, you've got some very good board members that, um, um, Ms. Hayes was invited, but she's with her, the regional championship wrestlers today, so that's really good. But, um, yeah, I'm, I'm concerned about the schools that are in need of repair and, um, my, my thought would be that that would be a priority before we start doing anything new.
Understandable. I don't disagree.
Thank you, ma'am. Please continue.
All right, thank you. So, uh, the next item is academic success and, uh, to kind of piggyback on what the, uh, your amazing fire chief and, and staff were saying about, this is career and technical education month, um, February and I forgot to hand you this, this is just an invitation you can pass around, uh, for an event that's coming up to honor CTE month, formerly known as vocational education, uh, now it's called CTE. Um, so, we, you know, this is one of the months that we celebrate all of our programs and all the amazing things our students are doing. As you know, I hope, at South Granville, we have some very strong CTE programs. We have automotive technologies, we've got agriculture, which focuses on animal science and horticulture. Um, we also have a CNA program, health sciences program, that leads to a certified nursing credential. Um, and then we also have entrepreneurship program through our virtual enterprise, uh, program. Those kids actually are in Florida right now competing, uh, at the national, regional level and they're gonna go on to New York later this, this spring and compete internationally.
Wow.
So, uh, that team from South Granville actually did their pitch to the state superintendent when she was here and, and her and her staff were just blown away at how amazing those kids were. They were, they said, uh, have you guys thought about going on Shark Tank? That's how slick they were. I mean, they were, they were beautiful, but, um, you know, we've got a really strong computer science program there, uh, at South Granville now, with all different areas in the high-tech sector. So, it's just, I'm really proud of our CTE program, but I'd love to continue to explore the topic of preparing our kids for, uh, careers in fire, um, you know, prevention. It, it is complicated, as, as he said, and we, we've looked into it and, so I'm gonna follow up with, um, with them and see what, what we can do maybe specifically between city here.
Thank you.
Um, just a couple of other related matters. Our, our middle-of-the-year test data for our students is looking, um, pretty good. I'm pretty encouraged by it. Um, of course, the state tests happen in May and that'll be where, um, the state kind of makes all of their designations. Um, I've had, I made a huge push this year with two other things and that's student behavior and attendance, because I believe those two things significantly impact our students' achievement. With regard to student behavior, um, I had given the directive that we will strictly enforce our code of conduct. Um, I think that we had sort of let that slip a little bit and, uh, that is no longer the case and our disciplinary referrals are down by almost a third, um, except for one category and that is long-term suspensions, which are up, because every single long-term suspension that comes to me from a principal, I am upholding. And, um, so those are, our alternative school right now is full. It's full. Um, regarding attendance, last year, our attendance was horrific. It was about eighty-eight percent for the year. We're tracking now at about ninety-two percent. Our goal is ninety-six percent. So, I'm hopeful that that will make a big difference. Again, it's sort of this hangover from the pandemic that, but we're now, uh, making referrals to the assistant district attorney for truancy. We're doing that and we've sent already over a dozen cases. So, um, the next item is human capital management. Uh, again, we're doing a lot better this year. Last year, we averaged around forty or fifty core vacancies. I'm, I'm talking classroom teachers in the core subject areas, forty to fifty all year. We're in the single digits now. And I attribute that, excuse me, to our effort, uh, to make sure that we staff every single position with every means available to us and I believe heavily on bringing in international teachers. And I want to thank, uh, I think those of you have been involved in supporting them in this. Um, these are highly qualified teachers from the Philippines, from Jamaica, from Central and South America, we even have some from Africa. We have seventy-nine international teachers working for us now and, um, we're doing a fantastic job, but anything you can do, when they come here, they literally arrive with like a suitcase. And so, we've had, uh, drives for them to get them house, home goods and help them find places to stay, get their driver's licenses, all those types of things. But, um, they're, they're proving to be just a wonderful addition to our, our Granville County Public Schools family. Um, regarding fiscal responsibility, we, I think it was referenced earlier, we had great, uh, joint meeting with our county commissioners and our board of education. I want to thank you guys again and, and Mr. Cummings, I believe you came in, yeah. So, you and I are ready to, um, co-present and, um, looking forward to the partnerships there. As I told the county commissioners, um, before we go and just ask, hand out for more money, um, we are working really hard to help ourselves first and, uh, so we are starting zero-based budgeting for the first time in many of our departments where we have some discretion. Rather than just taking the budget we had previously and carrying it over, we're starting from zero and I'm having each of the department heads justify those amounts to me and I'm very optimistic about how that's gonna play out. I think we're gonna be able to be a lot more efficient and we're gonna be able to put some of that money back down closer to the schools. In addition, I have eliminated two central office positions already and there will be more to come. So, I'm gonna protect those school-based positions as much as possible. But, um, look forward to those continued budget conversations with our partners at county level. Um, and then finally, just communications and, and, and community, um, you know, follow us on Facebook. Uh, we're, we're trying really hard to, um, you know, have a real strong presence and tell our story about the good things that we're doing. Um, again, in, in the spirit of esse qualm videri, we, we've got some work, we've got some real challenges and some issues, um, but we've also got some great things happening and, and I want to make sure everyone knows about them. So, again, thank you guys so much for all your support and thanks again, chief, for what you do for us. It, it makes such a difference, so. Happy to answer any questions or provide any other information you may have.
Mayor Proten?
Stan, you might not have this number readily available to you, but I know that when my son graduated from South Granville in two thousand and six, the college entrance percentage of graduates was one percent. And I know, yeah, and I know that there were several students graduating under a, a GPA of, um, with a very, very low GPA. I had a football player that I got into West Virginia College and he had a one-point-five GPA and that, to me, is a failure on part of the school and I know that, we're talking third, many, many years ago. But do you know what the college entrance qualifying percent, you gotta have a, a four percent to get into college? Do we have any idea? How many of our graduates are, been accepted into college?
Yes, um, so, we do. Um, I've actually looked at that data recently, about twenty-five percent of, well, let me back up. So, say there are a hundred kids that enter ninth grade.
Okay.
Okay? By, after four years, about eighty-five of those kids will cross the graduation stage for us.
Right.
Okay? That's eighty-five percent graduation rate. Of those eighty-five kids, about half of them, forty or so, will be accepted into a two-year, four-year or military.
Okay.
Okay? And that sounds good, but then only half of those students will actually finish with a degree.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's really about twenty out of a hundred that start in ninth, ninth grade will get a two-year or four-year degree. That's low to me. Um, I, and a lot of those folks, what's not factoring in that, of course, are like, things like credentials. So, if you go out and you get your HVAC credential or you get your welcome certificate and things like that, that's not baked into those numbers, but...
Well, I'm glad that you have the trade training that's available there. Is there any thought to turn Holly into a trade school?
There's been some discussions about, about a trade school. One of the challenges that, that keeps popping up though is transportation, um, getting those kids to a central location with bus services.
Okay.
Bus, buses, that's a whole other topic, but...
We're not talking about that.
Anyone listening would like to be a bus driver, please call. We pay for all the training and the food and you pay, pick off.
Well, of course, the state's meal, though, we used to have students driving the bus. They don't allow you to do that anymore.
Well, technically, uh, you can drive when you're eighteen. You can drive a school bus when you're eighteen. So, we could potentially have a student who's still enrolled at eighteen, but, um, most of our drivers are twenty-one or over.
Just throwing it out.
I think the community program could handle that, don't you?
Could should be able to.
Mayor, though, we'll get, we'll get you your CDL if you want to come on out.
Those days are, I could drive the bus, I couldn't deal with the kids. My patience, I mean, I, I got these children right here that, uh...
Bus drivers are same. They're truly same. We, we want...
Commissioner White?
I'm gonna switch gears on you for a second.
Yes, sir.
And this is only because I'm a, a strong proponent of the community policing process that Chief Willis is continuing to do in the community and I also agree with you, um, they're not law enforcement officers in the school. They're, they're someone that people feel comfortable going to talk to, they're, they're there for that purpose. Um, we have another school that's at the edge of the city of Creedmore and it's an elementary school just up fifty-six. What do we need to do to get that into the city limits to possibly make that a, a school that we can put another officer at as a resource? I know we're not getting any tax from it because of the school system.
That's right.
And that doesn't, that, I, I'm not worried about that.
Right.
I want to continue to build relationships in our community and I want to make sure that we have people in positions to do that. And I'm not trying to add more responsibility to Chief Willis, but, hey, when you've got a great program, chief, what am I supposed to do? You, you got great officers and I think that not having a police officer in the school, so to say, is, is something that we're missing out on, um, because it's not only, as I said, an officer in the school for safety purposes, it's someone that these kids feel comfortable building relationships and going to talk to.
I would fully support that line of thinking, Commissioner. Um, just for your information, currently, we have funding for nine SRO positions and, uh, the funding is directed to your department for two of those. Um, but we've had, we've had trouble filling all nine of those across the county. Um, the sheriff's department was responsible for seven of those and a lot of those have been vacant this year. And I'm really happy to announce that Butterholt Safety just came on board with, with, uh, one officer. So, now, the sheriff's department is down to five, no, six.
Six.
Six. And, um, but my goal is for next year to increase that number to fifteen and we've applied for a state grant that will help with that. And our commissioners have, have really helped, uh, as well as our state representatives, to kind of make sure we get that money, because there are other districts around us that are getting that level of funding. So, to your point, we're gonna need more officers and I would love to have them from a, a program that's proven successful. Happy to talk more about that, that's something you guys want to explore and if you'll agree...
Great idea, Commissioner White.
Commissioner Wilkins, any questions?
Yes, Dr. Winborn, sir. I don't mean to imply anything when I ask this, but I've been asked this from constituents. Can you provide us or me with the percentage of ethnic breakdown in school versus the percentage that are in those long-term suspensions?
Mm-hmm.
So, I can, there you can compare us.
Yes, absolutely. Um, so, we have district-wide, um, it's, it's just about a third, a third, a third with white, Hispanic and African-American, approximately. That varies by school, by school.
Mm-hmm.
And then we have also, um, a growing slice of the pie, so to speak, that's multiracial and from Asia, uh, Middle East in particular. Um, but the majority of students who are long-termed are males and the majority of those are black. Now, you know, our principals are the ones that make recommendations, uh, to me for long-term suspensions and we have a very well-defined student code of conduct. So, um, that's something that I've talked to our board of education about, is that concern, this misrepresentation, um, and it's something that we've had training about with our principals. Um, but, you know, what I like to continue to tell, um, the principals is that enforce the code of conduct regardless of who the individual student is, do it consistently and do it fairly.
I just hope it's arbitrary, that's all.
Sir, it, it, it would pain my heart if that were, if we were being our, you know, if anyone were targeted because of their race or ethnicity.
I just throw it out there.
Sir, it's something that we need to continue to pay attention to.
Thank you.
I won't hide from it.
Thank you.
Mr. Albright?
Hi, Stan. Thank you for being here. Um, I have, uh, two... I have two graduating sons from Granville High School. And my, I don't know if you, if anybody has ever mentioned this to you, but whenever we have home football games, I hate that the visiting squad has to either sit in their bus or sit in the end zone.
Out on the field.
Out in the field. Is there, when we were in high school, we always used to, we had the, we had the field house and we always had our lady side and our men's side. And when the visiting schools would come in that weekend, all of us girls had to clean out our stuff from the lockers because the visiting team used our side of the, the field house. Is there any way that something like that could happen, you know, at our school so that, I mean, it's just, I don't know, it's not embarrassing, but it's, it would be nice if we just had something for them to, you know, use as a locker area. And I also agree with Commissioner Kaczynski as far as Holly. I think Holly's a great resource to be used down the road, but I also like the thought of finishing what we've started before we move on to something else. Just like a checkoff list with the hubby, you know, you, you finish this one first before we move on to something else. So that's just my opinion, so.
Thank you. I'll, I'll look into that about the locker room facility, or at least, you know, area where they could gather.
Yeah, yeah.
I think something could be arranged.
Yeah, yeah. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
So Commissioner Way, that was, that was a surprise, Ben. It was a very good surprise. We were planning on requesting an ETJ expansion on that side of Creedmore because we don't have an ETJ on that side, but that's not going to happen. And, but annexing that school into the city of Creedmore, we would welcome it, absolutely welcome it. And I'm sure that we could provide an SRO. And I also want to thank you on employing our former police chief for your safety supervisor or whatever his title is. You've got two great people in charge and hopefully it will help everybody.
Thank you for mentioning that. I'm sorry I neglected that, but retired Chief King.
He did say that.
We have hired him part-time as a safety coordinator. He works for us 29 hours a week and his primary responsibility is sort of act as a liaison with our law enforcement agencies and to conduct safety audits of our schools. And he's working on all of our safety plans for each of our schools. And he's, he's been amazing so far. Huge, huge help.
And the way I look at it is technically you should thank us for allowing him to retire so he could go do that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Now Chief Wielis knows where he's going after he retires.
Dr. Winborn, we appreciate you coming here tonight and today. So used to meet at night. Thank you for all you're doing for our kids and for the schools and we're here if you need us.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we move now to Drew Cummings, Granville County Manager.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have to say, I got the text message from Mike that things were running ahead of schedule and I guess when you hire a retired sergeant major to be your town manager, I shouldn't have anticipated that, but I wasn't surprised. I was sitting with some old friends of ours. The woman of this couple was paralyzed a couple of years ago in a freak accident and her husband has just been diagnosed with ALS, which is terminal. And so count your blessings, right? Your health every day is something that you cannot take for granted. That was a, that was a heavy gathering, but I knew that I had to leave a little early anyway. Also want to appreciate our superintendent and all the good work that he's doing here in the county and the good partnership that we have. Not just the two of us, but with all the managers getting together regularly. I think that's really healthy for the county. And I'm aware, it's certainly part of my philosophy, that kind of as go the schools in a county, as go the towns and cities in a county, so goes the county. Sometimes we're, we're thought of as the big dog, but really there are, you know, constituent parts of the county that, that are absolutely essential that they be working well for the rest of the, the county to work well. So Mayor Wheeler, Mayor Protem, Kaczynski and Commissioners Albright, Wilkins and Way, thank you, and Manager Turner, I appreciate you.
And Gleason, he's zoomed in.
Oh, he is, on Zoom. I noticed he was missing, but okay. Good morning, Commissioner Gleason. I appreciate you having me here this morning and inviting me. I feel a little bit more like I have my, my bearings than I did last year when I had been on board all of a couple of months. That was a little bewildering, but, but I'm always glad to, to come here and talk with you. And I, in general, I really appreciate the, kind of the continued partnership at the elected and appointed level between the county and the city of Creedmore. I think that's important. I, I appreciate the number of you attending some of the listening sessions and showing up at other meetings in the community. I think that's good. That kind of cross-pollination and partnership is, is really important. So I have been here for 16 months now. It feels like...
You're still there?
Feels like more. It feels like more, but I mean that in a good way. We have done a lot of good work and made a lot of good progress and I'm, I'm happy with that and I'm proud of that and hope we can continue. But even so, I kind of think about the aggregate years of elected and community leadership in this room and I find it a little strange that I would be here talking to you about what the county is doing. But I'm, nonetheless, I'm really happy to be here. And I'm also happy that there are, well, it disappeared temporarily, but we have three commissioners here as well to talk to you about a handful of topics. We talked a little bit, I might have thought about addressing some of those in my remarks, but I'll leave them there at thunder and they can address some of those additional, additional Leaving them there at thunder. I kind of thought of four things that I wanted to talk about with you today. And those are economic development is one topic, zoning review is another topic, the impending revow, a third topic, and fourth topic is the county's kind of planned 10-year capital improvement program. I thought that all, all four of those topics might give some interest to you at least and so I'll spend a few minutes talking about each of those. I am really excited that we have a new economic development director coming on board soon. And I could tell you his name, but then I would have to, you know what? So I, I'm not at liberty to, to share his name with you yet. He'll be starting in mid-March and he is a true and experienced professional and I think he's going to be great for, for Granville County and, and all of our constituent communities. One of his first jobs is going to be to rebuild that office. That's a three-person office that has had no people in it for the last four or five months, three or four months. So that's been, that's been a little rough, but again, every crisis is also an opportunity and I'm really excited about him having the purview and the prerogative to, to rebuild that office. And I expect and will ensure that, that that rebuilt office is a good partner for Creedmore. It has crossed my mind and maybe it has crossed your mind too recently or at some point in the past, that the idea of Creedmore potentially investing in an even more robust centralized kind of county economic development office might be, might be productive. And even if not, I do think that a clear vision of what you want in and near Creedmore is a really important thing for the county's economic development office to understand and possibly to have some input in, you know, to be kind of in conversation with you about and sort of, you know, what you want, where you want it, inside and, and outside, but near the boundaries of the city. That's important. Another project that, that I would like them to undertake is, that you all can help with is a, a better and more detailed inventory of available or potentially available public and privately owned property, you know, kind of in categories and sizes X, Y and Z that might be available for economic development of various sorts. And I think if we have that kind of inventory countywide, I think we will make our own lives easier, make the, make it easier for a good economic development office to help you. And so that's something that I would love to see. As an aside, your mayor and a couple of our commissioners and the city manager met at the beginning of December in the Willow Room with a pretty sizable group of developers from all around the triangle. They were called the Triangle Community Coalition. And you could tell in that meeting the level of interest in this part of Granville County, this part of the world, they were paying very close attention to that whole conversation. And I think how we interact with people like that, how we plan through our zoning and our conversations with one another to interact with, with people and interests like that, I think is really important because it's here, it's coming. And so, you know, we have to, to plan accordingly. And that, you know, that point kind of goes along with my, my second topic, zoning review. And this is something that I've just been learning more about over these first 16 months, but I think since the county has had zoning, and maybe there've been, you know, a couple little tweaks, but basically we've had the same 10 zones forever since we had any zoning at all. And I think that with the growth that we're seeing, that you're seeing too with the, you know, the variety of housing and commercial and industrial needs and interests that are, that are swirling around, that it might be in our collective interest to, to kind of actively review the zoning inside and outside the, the city boundaries and to think about what kind of zoning and zoning allowances and requirements will help give us what we most want out of that growth, out of that interest. And I think for us, that, that has come and can come as just a series of tweaks here and there, right? Situations arise, we realize our zoning may not be tuned exactly to where our interests are, so we may tweak something here. But I also think our comp plan is now six years old or close to six years old. I think was finalized over a couple of years before that. And I'm not sure it completely reflects, you know, modern reality in Granville County or in and around the city of Creedmore. And I think a, a review of that comp plan, a renewal of that comp plan might also, as kind of, which would be obviously a more comprehensive effort, could, could be helpful in, in helping us kind of, again, in a more comprehensive way involving zoning, water and sewer, other kinds of things, kind of help us think about how we face the next decade of, of growth, for example, and growth pressure. And we would want, obviously would want that to be a well-coordinated process with all of you, with the city, right? So that's not something we can or should try to do in a vacuum, but something that we would want to have, you know, full, full partnership on. Revow. This is, I'm sure, although I haven't been here forever, I, I am quite sure that this is the largest revow, the most significant revow that Granville County and the town of, city of Creedmore has ever had. And that has implications for lots of things. I'm sure that, that as commissioners, you've been talking with your city manager about, about the implications of the revow and also about how to communicate with your citizens about it, you know, how their new values will interact with, you know, a, you know, possibly adjusted tax rate and so forth. That takes a lot of careful communication. We're trying to do better and better communication out of the county, public information office, out of the tax office, trying to do a better job, a good job communicating clearly with people about how that works. But the new, you know, the new property values do have lots of implications. They have implications for investors and buyers who are thinking about this area, right? A house that was worth 150,000, you know, might not have been a whole lot of interest to somebody who buys and flips houses, right? But a house that's worth 300,000 or 400,000, people look in a different way. Yesterday I got several calls, you know, they didn't even have my name right, right? But people were just wanting to buy houses and presumably flip them and resell them. But the new property values also have really important implications for our employees and, and long-term residents, not just sort of new folks coming in or thinking about coming in, but they have implications for the people who are here and for our employees who, who need to continue to be able to afford to live here. And so those are things that we have to, to keep thinking about. All of the growth in and around Creedmore and also other, you know, unincorporated area in Butner as well, these are all people who are going to be relying on your infrastructure and our infrastructure, right? And that has implications. You'll, I'm sure, will need to find new revenue through this revow in part, right? New revenue to help pay for that infrastructure that, that new residents and users will require. And some of that, some of that infrastructure that, that will get built, that will need to get built, we can partner with you on. And we are already in many respects planning to partner with you on, which leads me to my last topic, which is 10-year CIP or Capital Improvement Plan, Capital Improvement Program. Our commissioners have now reviewed multiple drafts of this CIP and are still engaged in balancing the sort of financial and operational implications of, of that plan. It is just a plan, right? But, but it is also a statement about what we see coming down the road and what we're planning to do about it. You know, and thinking about the infrastructure that our, our current and our future citizens need and deserve so that this city and this county continue to be a good place for people to, to live. In the, in the proposed CIP, which I anticipate we'll have a couple of public hearings for in March and, and hopefully adopt in April, there are numerous proposed investments in South Granville that, that your taxpayers, Butner's taxpayers, all of the county taxpayers would, would help finance. And though it, you know, again, it hasn't been adopted yet and it's just a plan until we implement, I do think it's important and relevant to note that, that there are significant proposed investments in recreational infrastructure, senior services infrastructure, solid waste infrastructure, and EMS and fire infrastructure that are anticipated in the southern part of the county. And, and at this point, I would say those are likely investments, right? Those, those will be, are already planned for included or will be. And I think that they're much needed, all of those facilities. And I think that the revow and the commitment of our county commissioners and of you will help make, help make those things happen. So that sort of concludes my prepared comments for the morning. I know that there may be lots of questions or some questions. I'm happy to answer any of them as best I can.
Mr. Wilkins.
Hey, Mr. Cummings, how are you?
Very well, thank you.
Talking about the revow, has any thought been given to a discount for senior citizens? I know we currently have one, but the income, you'd have to be a pauper to receive it. To, I know other states, I know New York has a star program, other states have programs timed, other things other than income.
Yeah.
So is there a chance we could reevaluate that at the county level for seniors?
So I'd say a couple of things, one of which is there is substantial difference in how state law in different states approaches this. My experience in North Carolina, which is all of my local government experience, is that our tax laws are fairly well-buttoned up. There is very little flexibility that local governments can exercise in how property taxes are administered. So there are these, there are, I think, three kind of standard state programs, homestead exemptions, circuit breaker and veteran and disabled veteran exemptions that are allowed. You're right that they're not very generous. I think that a variety of things have been proposed over time at the state level that, that would, might make, you know, some of those programs a little more generous or might handle exemptions... might make, you know, some of those programs a little more generous or might handle exemptions differently. I don't know that I, and the state might feel free, I'll put it this way, right? They might feel free to, or freer to tweak how much revenue or how, right, cities and towns and counties get revenue because it actually would have no implications for them, it has implications for us, right? And that kind of helps lead to my second point. When I was working in Durham, maybe over the last four years or so, there was a lot of conversation and then the slow development of a low-income homeowner tax assistance program. And so legally, you can't change how property tax rules apply to different people. But there, I mean, there was a lot of work done and I think, I don't know if there are other counties doing this now, there are kind of, I might even call them pilot programs in Mecklenburg County and Durham County that offer some grants back to people who have, and the local government can set up criteria however they want, well, I wouldn't say however they want, right? But maybe it's for long-term homeowners only. Is it for renters or owners, right? Is it, what are the income thresholds? And I would still call that definitely an experiment, at least in Durham, when I'm more familiar with that program. But I also think it's, so let's say you set, right, an exemption level at whatever, 60% of area median income, right? You might start to qualify for some tax exemption, right? Guess who you're going to hear from at next year's budget meeting? The people who are between 60 and 70% of area median income, right? And then maybe you give them a break and then you start hearing from the people who are between 70 and 80%. And when you look at the numbers, right, what does income equate to, those people aren't rich either. I mean, they are experiencing some hardship from an income point of view, but I think it's worth thinking about at a local level, if any of us were ever to start thinking seriously about a program like this, how it can very easily become kind of a slippery slope and how it may be, and once you give an exemption, once that cat's out of the bag, it's very hard to put it back in. And I think you kind of set yourself up where you're getting pressured to exempt more and more people and you're having to raise taxes on the other people to pay for that. And so it's tricky. I think, you know, we need the revenue that we need to run our specific bodies of local government, right? And there are a lot of different ways that we can raise that revenue, or at least some different ways that we can think about raising that revenue. But I think kind of thinking through intended and possibly unintended consequences is very important and relevant if we start thinking down that path a little bit.
City manager.
Yes, Drew, thanks for being with us today. If you had one more item to your list, you know, things going on where we're already shared, remember, I'd be very curious to know, I know you've got progress and something you can say on that.
Yeah. We are in kind of final negotiations with a good candidate that we finally got through that advertising process. I, man, I've had enough experience just in the last couple of weeks, thinking I had somebody locked up and then losing them, not locked up literally, but a new employee secured, that I hesitate to say anything is a sure bet until somebody shows up on their first day of work. But I, it's taken a while. I think, you know, we had some people with relevant experience who wanted to work 100% remotely from Winston-Salem, many things that weren't really likely to work very well for us. It's a tough kind of niche position, but I think the person that we've been talking to, Terry Hopgood, our PIO, is, who I know you're familiar with, is handling the details of that kind of hiring process. And I know he's just kind of crossing off the last few Ts and dotting the Is and hopefully we'll have somebody on board in the not-too-distant future.
Commissioner White, any questions?
Spray pad? I remember that from last year.
Splash pad.
You know, splash pad, sorry.
I have a lot of questions, I have a lot of comments, and, yeah, I'd always like a splash pad. If the county wants to help us with a splash pad, we're all for it. You know, the Southern end children would love to have a splash pad down here. And I believe that my board agrees with that. My biggest thing, the hospital system runs our EMS, we're well aware of that. What is the county in the process of doing to help put more ambulances on the road?
Right. So the first year that I was here, which was sort of in the middle of '22, '23, the county, we have an interlocal agreement with the hospital system for the operation of the EMS system. And in that year, the budget for which I was involved in creating, but there was, I think, $500,000 or $600,000 more dollars put into the EMS system than we had planned according to the interlocal. I know that the county has invested in a handful of additional ambulances and quick-response vehicles in the last, those are kind of coming in, I don't think they have finished coming in, but they are arriving and replacing and adding to older vehicles. I met with Adam and Jonathan Purnell the other day and we're talking about, they're coming to our retreat as well, and I wanted to talk with them and understand before they showed up at the retreat, kind of what kinds of things they were thinking about. They are thinking about the additional needs of the EMS system, obviously. I think we have a growing and an aging population, and not just because of that, right? But related to those things, we do experience increased call volume and just need across the county. And so I'm aware that that's one more system, right, that needs to grow along with, along with that population growth and the growth of calls and so forth. One other thing that I think relates to this is, and I'm not sure how much this would impact Creedmoor specifically, but I think it really would, it has significant potential impact across the county is, you know, Russ is going to talk a little bit more about Fire Commission and the Fire Tax District, but one of the things that we're working on with the Fire Commission is increasing the compensation that any of our volunteer fire departments get if they agree to be a medical first responder department. Right now, I think about half of them, six out of the 12, do that. All of the departments, if you have a cardiac arrest, any of the 12 departments will respond.
Are dispatched.
Right.
Or they have the manpower to respond.
Occasionally dispatched does not mean respond, that's accurate. But in part, I think, I wouldn't say they're directly related, but, or tied to one another, but they are related. So right now, a department that offers to respond to all kind of medical calls, it's $5,000 a year extra out of the Fire Tax District, which is jump change, right? You buy one set of fire clothes or one air pack or whatever and poof, that's gone, right? So the Fire Tax District is pulling in more money. If we keep it at six cents, which will be my recommendation to the board post-reval, it will be generating significantly more money. All of the volunteer fire departments in that scenario, which I hope materializes, would be getting significantly more money. And one of the things that I believe we will do with a pot of that money, one portion of it, is to sweeten the incentive for more departments to be able to be medical first responder departments. And how that works out on any given call, medical call in the county, depends on the situation, right? We may have five ambulances on the road and they may all be, three of them may be involved in a patient transport to Duke, two of them may be responding to other calls, or all five might be available. So depending on when the call happens, it might be highly critical and relevant for that fire department to be in a position to respond quickly to that call. You know, if the ambulances are nearby, it may not be as relevant. But I point that out just to point out that we're doing other things too that indirectly, I think, assist the EMS system in providing good, quick response to whatever kinds of calls happen. And most, you know, I think active structure fires are a tiny piece of what our fire departments respond to on an annual basis. You know, medical calls is much higher, and so it's important, I think, to the system that those departments be equipped and compensated for responding to medical calls as well. I hope that helps.
It does. One of the recommendations I have, this is just my personal recommendation, is the increase of the population, especially the aging population. I've seen other jurisdictions go to a community paramedic program.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know if you're familiar with the community paramedic. You may be because Durham is one of the pilot programs that started it.
Yep.
We have some people in the community that call 911 pretty much on a regular basis.
Yep.
And basically, this community paramedic goes to help mitigate that problem and get them resources to get them where they need to be medically treated instead of having to call 911 all the time.
Yeah. That's one of the things we talked about, actually, with Adam McConnell and Jonathan Purnell the other day. I think, and again, this is not my trajectory of work or expertise, but I'm not sure at the moment that Granville County 911 and the protocols that they operate under for medical calls triage those medical calls in a way that would allow us to determine this call is probably appropriate for a community paramedic to respond to as opposed to, you know, launch the fully-blown ambulance over there to see, you know, Mrs. Public, right, who may just want to see a handsome young man, you know, dressed up in a uniform for her weekly visit, right? I mean, that happens, right? And so I think continuing to work with 911 and Adam Bailey, the medical director, to see if we can kind of tweak and start triaging medical calls and making sure that we're responding kind of with the least expensive, appropriate level of care that really that call might require. I think that can help us fine-tune what our EMS system is doing and not to, right, that doesn't mean that, it is important that everybody get as close to the appropriate level of medical response that they need when they call. But of course, those needs differ pretty widely. And so if we can tweak our system so that it's responding appropriately, I think we'd be doing a service to everybody and to our communal pocketbooks as well.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Albright.
You said, you had mentioned central development, central economic development.
Yeah.
To me, that means that one specific thing is run out of one area. So could you go into a little bit more detail? You said that we would have some input in that, but what would our percentage of input in that, you said like for rezoning and things like that? Could you explain that a little bit more for me?
Yes. So I think, at least in my head, those are two different topics, kind of the zoning topic and how we cooperate on that, and then what a more...
I'm just asking, would it be run out of Oxford and you would be kind of letting the rest of the communities know what they were able to do instead of the cities run their own?
Right. I mean, we never take away the authority of cities to kind of do their own zoning and so forth. What I meant with economic development is, we've got a three-person office. Audrey Boone, the former interim economic developer, she and I had had a number of conversations about, would it be good for the economic development office of the county to have an office here? So we do with Veteran Services, for example, we're down here a couple days a week, or a day a week. And I think, you know, that kind of concept is important. With a three-person office or a two-person office, it's kind of tricky, but I think, I appreciate that principle. I don't think it's possible to run everything well if you just stay and sit in an office in Oxford every day, right? That you're not going to know what things look like on the ground down here, you're not going to be meeting people and business owners and elected officials and managers that you need to know and so forth. So I think she was raising a good point. It will be more possible, and one thing I said to her was, let's get this office rebuilt before we start talking about spreading ourselves all over creation, right? But I think that a three-person office can think more about that, a four or a five-person office can think even more about that, right? We might be able to come closer to permanently staffing a South Granville office. I mean, I, it's been interesting, as I have gotten all of the calls and messages intended for Granville County Economic Development since Audrey took a different job, there are a lot of people interested in talking to Butner and Creedmoor about parcels with, you know, 50 or 100-acre parcels that might have water and sewer available to them in this part of the county. And I know you're working on that and that Mr. Schreuer is coming up later, so I realize that's not, you know, just an easy-peasy conversation. But back to your question, Creedmoor may or may not determine that its economic development interests, you know, require a, you know, a full-time equivalent or any particular number of people hours. But if you do come to that conclusion, I think it's worth pondering, is it better for Creedmoor to hire their own person and have that person in sort of their own office here in Creedmoor? Or would it be, would it be better to kind of invest some portion of money like that into a centralized office that is sort of looking all across the county, including here? And, I mean, the zoning question, I think we need to talk regularly and work carefully with each other, no matter what, you know, to kind of talk about how zoning and planning inside the city limits interacts sort of with what's happening in the ETJ or just beyond the ETJ, right? And to make sure that that's coordinated and that we're not working at cross purposes there.
Mayor Protem, anything else from you?
So at the retreat last year, the county retreat, the emergency director, emergency management director, I believe it was, stated that 453 times a year, there's no ambulance available. I know that two ambulances were replaced in this year. I understand too that it is not controlled by the county, that it's controlled by Granville Health. But there's been no effort, that I can see, to change that problem, and a year's gone by. And I think you said the county gives into this program like about half a million dollars a year.
Actually, it's more, it's up above a million, it's sort of between one and one and a half million.
So that is to assist them in funding the project. As a taxpayer, I had no idea any of this stuff. You know, if I pick up the phone and dial 911, I need an ambulance, I think it's my tax dollars at work, but it's diverted. So a lot of people don't understand that. But the fact that we have not added one ambulance to the system in a year when we've got to report that every single day of a year, and it's one point something days of the year, there's no ambulance available in this county. I believe that that matter is urgent. I like the community paramedic idea. We do have, I have a scanner in my house, I hear a lot of the calls, some of them are, somebody's got a stomach ache or it's a sick call, or they just need, they've got a high fever and stuff. My response to that in my house is, go to your doctors. And I know that ambulance service gets paid for by the patient, Medicare or whatever gets paid.
Some of it.
So, yes, very little when it comes to Medicare.
On all of their ambulance sort of rides, there may be 20 or 25% cost recovery.
Exactly. But my concern is that we still don't have any more ambulances since I found out about this, and we're growing. And I don't think you have anything to say about it because it's owned by Granville Health.
Well, we do and we don't, right? They run it, right? And they, last year, they didn't ask for any more ambulances for QRV, I think.
Uh-oh, here comes the rest of them.
And let me just say a couple other things, we'll see what Commissioner Karen has to add.
I'm on the board of insurance studies.
They didn't, they didn't ask for any more last year, in part, I think, because we were still in the process of spending the county money that had been allocated in the first place for replacement and vehicles and QRVs. And they have a long lead times, right? So even if you want a new ambulance, it's not as, it's not as simple as snapping your fingers and it drives up. Another thing on the new response calls, I went over that data with Adam and Jonathan. with Adam and Jonathan the other day again. And it is both concerning and a kind of undefined problem. We spent a number of minutes talking about, how long does each of those instances last on average, right? Is that a minute, or five minutes, or hours, or, it does matter. It is a concerning metric, but it's not very well defined yet. And I think every community in America, on some point, on some level, makes a compromise, right, or decides that there is an adequate number of ambulances, right, to provide all the responses in a particular kind of timeframe, right, what's the response time and so forth. And we have to make that compromise, right? We could have 100 ambulances, and there'd be, at some point during the year, where we might not have available. I'll also say, I believe they will be bringing some requests for some additional vehicles to the county this year. And I will also say, it is a sobering number. When you look at the cost of a brand-new ambulance and the staff required to operate it, not necessarily 24/7, because sometimes we, you know, we are only kind of, we peak load, right? But still, in general, right, that whole system is a 24/7 system, right? It takes, actually, five people to fill one slot that you need 24/7. So this is not a, you know, a staffed ambulance, I'm going to get the number, I'm going around it, right? 1.3 million, plus the two pennies on the tax rate. And some of that's just one time, right? The ambulance itself is just one time. But these are significant investments, which kind of gets back to my point, right? At some point, we have to find a compromise that we're okay with about how many ambulances and how much staffing in that system is going to work. They subsidize it somewhat from the hospital side, and they get some revenue from the, from Medicare or Medicaid, right, for some of the transports. And they come to us to kind of, we're all, all of those three major funding sources are contributing to kind of create the EMS system that we deal with. And, you know, again, they are coming with some additional asks, and we'll see what we can do with it. But I appreciate that concern. I don't dispute any of it. You know, I always like to know more about a problem. I like to dissect it a little bit, right, and figure out, what does that graph actually mean? How many, what is the magnitude of, the other thing we were talking about is, in an average year, how many EMS calls do we get during those gaps when there is no ambulance available, right? Because that's really, that's the real metric of unmet need, right, is how many calls you get during those periods. And so we're trying to develop better data and information to understand it a little better, but in the meantime, they're coming with more requests, and I'm sure commissioners will be interested in making some additional investments in that area. Sorry, Steve's in Florida.
Did you talk to him around it much times, that number?
Before you do, just identify.
Yes, so, Commissioner Karen, Granville County Board Chairman, and also a board trustees member. And you're fortunate to have a board trustees member here at our health system. So that number does not mean that people called up 911 and they said, I'm sorry, there's no ambulance. That number, as Drew said, is, there was a point in time when people were holding their breath saying, please don't let anybody call. We don't have an ambulance currently. Not all those times did someone actually call. Sometimes it came and went, and nobody even noticed. I mean, we noticed because we're charting that, but it may not have been needed. If you've got other ambulances available outside county, Bobby can speak to this as a trustee member, we're setting up a non-emergent transport system to help alleviate some of the calls that go to FCI, as well as taking our own people from our emergency room and carrying them back to nursing homes, or taking them, you know, from point A to point B. So it's our emergency responders, the actual ambulances that will license sirens, that will not be used as those transport vehicles. So there are some efforts going on. It's not something that we're, you know, publicizing every single day that the community would hear about it. But that number is a scary number, that 450 some odd things. But it does not mean that people needed it while that was happening. So that number is way, way, way lower. So I just wanted to make sure in public, when you say there was 500 times last year that we didn't have an ambulance available, that doesn't mean it was 500 times when we needed an ambulance. It could have been five. So that's a scary, scary number. It's a number we keep track of, but it is not, it is not a metric that the community needs to be really focused on saying, oh my God, we're without coverage. So it is, I just wanted Drew to talk around it at one point. Just for your own, the hospital is working on that. We have upgraded our equipment. We're well-staffed, we're only a couple positions short. We are standing up that transport system so that it alleviates some of the care there. So there are things happening. It's just that it's not super well-oversized. But I just want to come back to that number again. It's not, that wasn't some call for service that was not answered. It wasn't just a metric that we keep track of.
Then before you leave, do other communities have those issues, too?
Absolutely.
Is it like a short staff thing? Is it like, is like...
Charting, the CAD systems and all that kind of stuff. I mean, you've got moving vehicles, and I know we do pre-position our assets, you know, when things get really busy. And they're always in a state of flux.
Yeah.
You know, it's like a soda flat with marbles in it going all around.
Okay.
And I think the, once we get the non-emergency transport system set up, that's going to free up a lot of, lot of space for our ambulance system to do emergency calls. Commissioner Wilkins?
Commissioner Karen, answer my question. Thank you.
Okay. I would say to Commissioner Albright's question, last question, every community that runs EMS has that, every single one. I mean, it's kind of a question of how much and how do you measure kind of the number of calls that come in?
That's kind of a hard question to ask him because he probably didn't know all, everybody else's numbers, but I was just wondering if it was a...
Very common. Not at the same level in every community, right? Because they come to different answers about what's the right level of EMS funding, but...
And like Duke has their own transportation. It has been blue and black. It looks like ambulances, which they are supplied by a lot of emergency transportation and sometimes not emergency.
Drew, real quick, probably should have invited him. Is there anything we need to know about Sheriff's Department for the animal control area?
First of all, it's the sheriff's office. And I'm not the sheriff, but I know he would...
Well, just as far as the county.
Yes, I know what you're asking. I would say county administration continues to spend a lot of time working with the sheriff's office on a wide variety of projects, inward-facing, outward-facing. I think that getting his staffing and kind of skill base right, I would say public safety staffing and, you know, Chief Wielis is probably, I don't know how much years still experiencing this, too, but kind of the churn of the last couple of years and the bidding war for good law enforcement talent is something that I know has affected both of us. We have moved to enterprise fleet management this year. We have replaced a lot more vehicles, not just in the sheriff's office, but across the county than we've been able to do previously. So people notice that they see a lot of newer sheriff's office vehicles driving around. Some people wonder why or how that's working. We will spend less money this year on fleet than we have, you know, spent in any recent year.
We should get a discount then. We started it.
Oh, that's right. I forgot about that.
Yeah, we do that.
Appreciate you taking the leap and being the, one of the guinea pigs. But, you know, we're working to, to try to, how should I say this, intelligently use a detention center that is larger than we need solely for county detainees to generate some revenue to help pay off that facility sooner than we might otherwise have been able to. There are, you know, the state and the feds are always interested. They always have some number of detainees that they would like to park there. Vance County has been interested in talking with us about the facility. My, some of these decisions are the sheriff's to make in general. I feel like it's my job to make sure that if we're bringing in, I'm always happy to get more revenue, but a little bit more revenue and a lot more risk is not a good trade-off. And so I want to make sure that we can, we have the resources and the protocols in place to have these people safely in our detention facility before we, before we do that. And so I've been working with the sheriff on that. I don't know if there are other specific subtopics that you'd be interested in?
No, just general, in animal control there.
Animal control, you know, just recently, we've bumped up the pay of almost all of our animal control department. Durham County, I'm sad to say, had a recruiting fair where they were offering close to 10,000 more for animal control positions. And so we, we, and what's interesting is, we did a paying classification study in 2019 that at least on paper told us we were paying animal control officers adequately. That is transparently not the case anymore, right? And so on the fly, pretty much, we had to make some adjustments to the pay of, you know, animal control supervisor and animal control officers. They had all, by the time we did that, they had all already gone, or almost all of them, to interview in Durham County. I think, you know, people who don't make a lot of money in the first place, they can be as dedicated as we want to Granville County or to one of the constituent communities, right? But if you make 40,000 a year and somebody offers you 25% raise to go work 15 miles down the road, you've got a mortgage to pay. You've got a family to feed, right? If you rent here, your rent has been going up along with the property values, right? I mean, that's kind of a no-brainer. It is a great new facility they have. We've just been replacing some cages, you know, making some additional upgrades. Animal control in Granville County is a totally different ballgame than it is in Durham County. That's been an interesting thing to learn more about, right? We don't have cows running around on the road and pigs getting loose from one house and tearing up the flower garden in the next house over. But I think they do a good job with that. It's a pretty small department. It's bolstered by a lot of volunteers that we try to, you know, make feel welcome and we appreciate their help greatly. But I think it's working okay. We're having to make some adjustments to pay. And maybe the one last thing I'll say is that it's a little bit like the EMS system, right? If people want to expect a robust animal control response at 2:00 AM on Sunday morning, that's a different staffing model, right, than we have historically or typically had. We have somebody on call who may be able to respond, but people want and expect different things. Some of the people moving in to the county who have been more accustomed to a big-city-type law enforcement or animal control response, and they don't get it here. They get bent out of shape a little more quickly. But, you know, that's kind of a, we have to communicate clearly about what we're able to do in the current configuration and weigh possible additional investments against all the other needs that there are, EMS, schools, sheriff, lots of needs that we're trying to balance.
Well, I'm going to mention this. My wife doesn't like attention, but her sister passed away about a year and a half ago. One of the, she loved her dogs, big dogs and all that. So yesterday, we went to the animal control place, got a tour, and the wife donated $10,000 to animal control for their services and all. And it was quite a facility. They were out of cats, which is kind of unusual. They had some cute dogs. If I didn't have to, I'd have taken one or two of them.
I didn't feel your pain. Every time I go in there, I'm like, I gotta get out of here. I gotta go.
Drew, we appreciate it. Thank you for the good information. We'll be in touch with you about some more requests from our end. Thank you for all you do.
And thank you. And we'll do the same. I appreciate the comment about, about, is it, forgive me for not knowing, is it Tower River or Mount Energy Elementary School?
Mount Energy.
Right on the border. I mean, annexation might be or might not be needed, right? But I think it's a good idea to have the closest by, the most familiar law enforcement agency providing officers in those schools. That's kind of a logic that we've been talking about across the county. There's promise of additional state revenue coming in that I think will lessen the burden on all of us for providing those out of our own budget. So I look forward to that.
Well, if you can let us have ETJ out, pass Pleasant Grove Church, that would work well.
Talk to those commissioners.
Well, I'm indirectly speaking to them.
I know you are. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions for him, just real quick? We're good. We're good. Thank you. All right. I think we've reached that magic time for a little bio-break and just a general break. So we will break for 15 minutes.
When you get down here, you may want to add Jimmy and Tony Kozart to here, just in case they have anything they want. They may not. Can you call them the commissioners?
Okay.
If some Tony Kozart comes in.
Yeah, he just did.
Now, if I had anything to say about it, that's what I asked. I said, if there went in, if I had anything to say about it, wouldn't be any in the shelters. I'd have the owners in the shelter, the dogs that were bred in there. that were bred in New York. So, you know.
Yeah.
Well, that's why, that's why we're waiting for you. I want to hear all the ideas.
Yeah.
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 I'm from.
And the rest of us are all wearing coats.
Oh, no. I guess that's because I'm more active.
All right, we will take back up here. Uh, next is Washington State, Chairman Jimmy Gooch and Executive Director Scott.
All right, well.
Before you start also, welcome back to the Madam Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. Good to be here. Thank you. You've got four commissioners here now. So we have to be careful. We have to be careful how we interact. Well, as Bobby stated, I'm Jimmy Gooch. I'm the County Commissioner for District Seven and also the Chair of the South Bramble Water Sew Authority. Uh, our, uh, our mission is to provide quality water and sanitary sewer services to our customers. Did I get the slide right? I mean, to our customers in efficient, sustainable, and environmentally conscious manner. Seguasa exists to be a superior utility service provider that contributes to the success of the region. And as you all know, we were originally set up to provide services for the South Bramble Region, uh, Budner, Creedmore, Still, and the county interest in this area, in the service area. Our strategic plan goal area is our focus area one is safe, reliable, and sustainable water system, maintaining quality. I'm not used to this, okay? Maintaining quality water services by supporting and funding operating and capital components and pursuing partnerships opportunities when available. Our focus area number two is reliable and sustainable sanitary sewer system. Ensure the continuity of high-quality sanitary sewer services prioritizing the support of funding of both operating and capital components. Our focus area three is organizational excellence, and this is the part that Scott is excellent at. Maintaining a high-performance organization that is responsive to the needs of the stakeholders and provides a level of service that aligns with customer expectations. Uh, focus area four is our environmental character, and that's promoting, protecting, and enhancing the healthy and sustainable natural environment. And our strategic plan combined with Creedmore's 2040 Plan should equal the success of the Creedmore 2040 Plan. And with that, I'll turn the rest of the presentation over to, uh, Director, uh, Executive Director Shroya.
Thank you, Scott. Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners, City Mayor.
Good morning.
County Commissioners and Board of Directors here for Seguasa. Appreciate your attendance here this morning. Um, I don't want to take up a whole lot of your time. I know that you have a busy day today and a busy weekend with the Super Bowl upon us, so I think that we're all preparing special meals today for tomorrow, including at my household. Uh, I think one of the things that's really important on the discussion today is truly this slide that we're talking about here. Um, as you can see, uh, your success is based on our success collaboratively into the future. So I think that you have all had an opportunity to see the presentation materials that were provided to you ahead of time. Um, it is not really my intention to go over, uh, every document. Let's make sure I present this here. Um, but we have an opportunity here to talk about some of the high priority projects that are going on with Seguasa that also affect the city of Creedmore. So before I go down a list of projects here, let me just mention what we have in front of us here. So we have basically our high priority projects, which include PFAS, water quality booster station upgrade here in the city of Creedmore, water meter upgrades within the city of Creedmore, lead and copper program, which is Seguasa Y, the I-85 sanitary sewer system improvement project, and also development system fee revisions. So is there anything that the, uh, the board would like to focus on this morning as far as discussion on any of these topics? And if you would, I think it'd be great just to kind of jump into a certain area and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have regarding any of these projects.
How about starting with the water meter upgrades?
Yes.
Because a lot, a lot of citizens see these things going on when we did the beginning of them and want to make sure that there's clarity for that we're just finishing what we started.
Sure. I'm glad to. Okay. Very good here. So as you can see from the slide presented above, just some background information regarding the program, Seguasa has approximately sixty-six hundred water meters throughout our service area. And these water meters are comprised of different manufacturers, different types, different models, uh, throughout the service area. So Seguasa is focused on bringing, uh, this water meter base, if you will, to one technology, one standard meter. So it's a program that we've been looking at and implementing, if you will, uh, across certain areas of our distribution network for the last year or so. Uh, specifically focusing on the city of Creedmore, we have about two hundred, excuse me, twenty-two hundred water meters in the service area that we want to upgrade, basically to a new standard meter, if you will. Um, and the standard meter basically is what we call an AMR slash AMI water meter. And what does that mean? Let me explain that to you. The, the, the meters that we have in the ground in most areas here are radio read. So we don't physically go to each meter, if you will, and, and read them. We have devices that pull the information from the meter. So we physically drive around and collect that information from the meter. The meters that we're putting in the ground also have the capability to do AMI, which is more of an automatic reading capability that reports to an antenna that collects readings more often. So we're putting in the ground, uh, the technology that will allow us to move to those systems in the future. There's no plan for that upgrade at this point, uh, because it's very expensive to move to that next technology level, but as you can tell, it's best to get everything to a single technology platform, if you will. So what we have, uh, in front of you is the CIP that was approved by the Seguasa Board, and it's a million dollar project, and the majority of that cost is related to the cost of the water meter. We, uh, we pay about, uh, three hundred dollars per water meter, and we're looking at a program here to go out and change out the twenty-two hundred meters in this area. And we're looking to do it via a service contract. So that million dollars actually includes, uh, the cost of the meter plus the service contract to do that. So what does a service contract mean? Well, this means that you bring a vendor in, basically a contractor, and they go around and they actually remove and replace the meters in coordination with, with the agency. So they can do it a lot quicker for us. And it's really important when you have a, a billing period once a month and you're doing reads, you only have so many days in between the reads, basically, to do the meter exchange, basically. So we're in the process now of pushing out the request for proposals for the meter service, and once we have that in, we'll bring a package to our Board of Directors, and we'll look for, uh, an award for a service vendor and then also the purchase of the meters. So the way the meters are backlog right now on the ordering process, uh, once we get the RFP out and the contract back to the board, we're probably looking at, um, six to nine months, actually, in terms of this program as far as start to completion. So I hope that answers your question about the water meter program. Are there any other questions more specifically about the meter program?
How, how accurate are these automated readings? Do you have any idea, out of the few that you've put out there, as far as electronically are they as accurate as it would be personally going out?
Thank you. That's a, that's a great question. So the, the meters that we actually put in the ground are, are run via battery, and the manufacturers recommend that we actually replace the meters every ten years. The batteries have about a twelve to fifteen-year lifetime, so actually you want to replace those meters before the battery runs out. Uh, meters traditionally, when they get old, they slow down. They don't speed up. And the accuracy, well, that's, that's good and bad. So when you replace a, a meter with a new meter, you're, you're getting a more accurate read, if you will. Um, and the technology is well-advanced to have accurate reads all the time. So.
Okay. Commissioner Albright, you were, you had.
I actually had the, the same question that Georgiana did, so he's already answered for me.
Commissioner Wilkins.
Yeah, one question, please.
Can you tell us where you've put them already in this area? No names?
I think that, um, I think the, well, let's see, there's a couple of the newer neighborhoods. I don't have the list in front of me, but I think that Commissioner Kaczynski, was it in your neighborhood?
Yeah, he did Whitehall first.
The Whitehall. So, uh, I think that we, we hit certain areas. And let me tell you what the strategy is, because when, we have certain routes, uh, set up in our meter reading system that were designed years ago, and the routes themselves have different quantities of meters within those routes.
Right.
You may have one route that has two hundred or three hundred meters, you may have one route that has eleven hundred. Well, as I explained, when we do our meter reading, it takes us about eight days to ten days to do our reads. That leaves the balance of the month, basically, that we can change out meters before the next read. Our utility billing staff requires that we change up all the meters on a route during that period. So we went in and we selected some of the newer subdivisions, if you will, or areas that we could go into and, and do that exchange, basically, within that twenty-day period to get in line. And that is one of the challenges of this program when we do this massive changeout, is to make sure that we're working with a vendor that knows that this isn't something that you do all at once in twenty days. It's something that's going to take several months to do in batches.
Follow-up question.
Yes.
PFAS complies because we're, we're at Seguasa.
Well, sure. I sure can. Ready to jump to that? Let me see if I can find that in my schedule here.
One more before you get to that. These readings that you take, are they from a central location, or do you still have to send trucks to, to be proximity to read them?
Right. So when we do the, the meter upgrade, we're going to stay with the standard system where we actually drive the vehicles around with the antennas inside the truck and the computers, and they simply pull the information from the meter as they're driving by. So that will be our standard platform before we consider upgrading to the next technology. And with some of the new subdivisions on the horizon, uh, around our communities, uh, we're looking at possibly doing some test programs with the new AMI system to do the automatic reads, to have that come, basically, into our, our central office, our business office.
Thank you.
Those data reads. Okay, I need to go back to page, slide seven here. All right, so the background here, I've provided you with, uh, some information just on the PFAS program itself, in terms of describing the class of compounds commonly referred to as forever chemicals. PFAS can be found in products made regularly by most citizens, uh, such as lotion, wax paper, water bottles, cleaning products, non-stick cookware, floss, and more. Water utilities such as Seguasa are passive receivers of PFAS. That means Seguasa does not produce nor manufacture PFAS. Instead, these chemicals are present in the source waters and are treated to produce that we produce in our drinking water. As far as the actions, in July of 2023, Seguasa hired engineering consultant CDM Smith to assist Seguasa on its journey with PFAS compliance. CDM Smith was tasked with two items, and that was creating a PFAS pilot testing program and two submitting on Seguasa's behalf two NCD EQ state revolving fund finance grant applications. Uh, one NCD EQ application was for the maximum grant amount of five hundred thousand dollars for the PFAS pilot testing program, and the second grant was for the amount of twenty million dollars for the PFAS mitigation, engineering design, and construction. CDM Smith completed the PFAS pilot testing program report in January of this year, and Seguasa anticipates certification from NCD EQ in March or April twenty-four regarding the status of the two grants submitted in October twenty-twenty-three. Let me just talk about that a little bit. So the pilot testing program that we are going to set up is actually done at the, the water treatment plant, and it's testing with our water system and our filtration system which technology or combination of technologies is the best, most cost-effective technology to remove the PFAS. So we, we tend not to use empirical data. We simply go and we actually test and we run analysis for about six to nine months, actually, on the different chemistries of the water and to come up with a combination. Once we find out what's the most cost-effective treatment to get us down below the, the, uh, standard EPA requirement as far as maximum contaminant levels, we then can start to work on a design for the removal of the PFAS. So the pilot testing program, even though we've put a grant in for that with DEQ, we also have that actually funded in our CIP currently for that expense. We have no expense budgeted right now for the removal and the construction of the PFAS because we don't know what that cost is, but we know what the range of costs are. So with the three types of technologies that are out there for PFAS removal, the different technologies have different cost per million gallons of water that you actually treat. So once we finish our pilot testing, we'll know the design and we'll be able to calculate the cost that we have associated with that. So, um, we're moving forward with that. Uh, we're just kind of paused here for another six weeks just to figure out what we may receive from DEQ as far as a grant before we move forward. However, if we do not receive a grant for the pilot testing, we will still move forward with the pilot testing because we do already have that expense in our CIP. So we are, we are moving forward, uh, with the program. We're also waiting for the final maximum contaminant levels from the US EPA, which they have not issued yet. Uh, but we're not standing around waiting for that. We're still moving forward, if you will, uh, on the technologies that we need to understand and move forward with that removal. Trying to think if there's anything else. I think that's, that's it for the PFAS right now.
Any questions? All right. If you just continue around like we're going so we can, we're not searching through our paperwork.
I'll just continue on the topic?
Yeah.
Sure.
The next one, I think, would be the water distribution system improvements. Like I said, that way we can just flip the page and be on the next section.
Sure. Be happy to do that. All right. Are you already there? Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. So this is an important project here at the Lake Rogers Booster Pump Station. Um, in twenty-twenty-two, uh, Seguasa started to create a water distribution hydraulic model, and it started right here within the city of Creedmore to take a look at the distribution network and the water quality, uh, throughout the entire network here. And the hydraulic model is now being reproduced in the other communities that we serve so that we have one solid combined hydraulic model, uh, happening. Um, at the conclusion of that analysis, we recognized that there were some things that we could do to the distribution network to make some improvements, whether it be fire flows, uh, water quality-related, uh, system improvements as far as pressure. One of the items that came up was related to the Lake Rogers Booster Station improvement. The booster station itself is located on Highway fifty-six, right across from your park, and this is a point of entry from the Seguasa Water Main on fifty-six into the city of Creedmore. So it's kind of the, of the upstream end of the distribution network. This provides, the station provides boosting in terms of pressure, volume, basically, into the service area here, and it also injects chlorine chemicals into that so that we have a, um, an increased chlorine level, because as the water travels through the pipes from the water plant in Budner, you get some degradation in the chlorine levels, basically, because of time and travel, and also because of temperature. So temperature relates back to your chlorine levels within your, your pipes as well, and that is basically what's serving the city of Creedmore here. So we noticed there were some inconsistencies in the equipment as far as the dosage and how the equipment was working. So when that was discovered, we said, well, we need to make improvements, basically, to that pump station in that area. So we started to do the design work. Uh, we have completed the design work on that, and we've gone out to bids, and we've received the bids on that, and that item will actually come to the Board of Directors, uh, Tuesday this week, uh, for construction approval for that project. Um, it's, uh, it's a simple project. It's an expensive project, but, uh, we hope to have this project, uh, completed before July first. That's our target, um, trying to beat the heat, if you will, and I think that we'll be successful in doing that. Any questions on that project?
Any questions? Uh, Mayor Proten.
Scott, when the, um, problem at the Lake Booster Station was discovered, did we discover that the pump for the chlorine in that booster station probably never worked at all?
Well, it's, it's hard to say if it, it's hard to say just based on our records because I know it's been intermittent, if you will, and that's what we discovered along the way, that it would work, it wouldn't work. It was inconsistent, basically. That's what we discovered, especially during our analysis at the same time. So we're not sure just based on our records how well it worked, uh, throughout the period, but I know that what we're doing to it now as far as improvements that we're making will be, uh, very extensive, and in order to combat that, if you will, in the future, we've also moved, uh, very strongly in the last couple of years towards technology use. So we actually have a control net as part of this project, which will be a SCADA upgrade directly back to our water treatment plant. So we'll be able to evaluate those levels, those pumps, those controls all the time to ensure that we're getting the quality product that we need coming out of those pumps.
And when we discovered this and looked at the results from the hydraulic model, we determined that the chlorine level dropage was worse out by the Wilton area, that the city of Creedmore Incorporated was having enough chlorine distribution according to our levels, but the, it was falling down at the end of the line, and that's why this must be done. And the equipment in that booster station is obsolete, and that's why it has to be redone.
That is, that is correct. That's, that's a, a great summation. In fact, um, we are looking at Seguasa Y, all of our postations and our chlorine injection equipment to bring it up to standard. Not that we're having problems, but it's just that time, that's the time as far as the resource in the CIP to bring those, those products up to today's standards as well.
Any other questions? All right, sir.
All right. Talked about the meter replacement program. Lead and copper program updates, let's just touch on that. So the US EPA, um, has a rule, an updated rule revision that went into effect December sixteenth of twenty-twenty-one, and many of you may be familiar with the lead and copper rule itself. I mean, basically, it's to eliminate lead service lines. Um, and this, this program is not new. It's actually been a program in place since about the early nineties. Uh, it's just the rule revision, basically, took a look at the program and maybe the lack of success of getting rid of lead lines and said, we're going to increase this program to ensure that we have plans in place to identify completely all the lead lines throughout a service area, both on the public side and the private side. So the public side would be from the water main to the meter, and the private side would be from the backside of the meter to the house. That's basically your demarcation at that meter box. Now, what we have to do as far as Seguasa is we look at all of our customers within our service area, and we have to comply with a plan and submit it back to the DEQ by October of this year to, to identify what service lines we have out there in terms of lead. Uh, another, uh, compliance part is testing, increased testing that has to go on throughout our service area, um, for our residents, uh, our schools, our daycare centers, churches, businesses, and the like. So they've kind of broadened the testing requirements, uh, which are fantastic. Um, and then we're also going to do, um, something here at Seguasa that isn't required at our customer level, but we thought it would be great for our customers, is we're going to actually be showing here, probably within about the next eight weeks, a map online, in fact, in terms of all the different lead lines that we did not find, basically, throughout the service area. So you'll be able to look at your own address, pull it up, and see how it was identified in terms of conditions. Now, some might ask, how do you identify lead lines that are underground? Okay, well, we are able to pull building permits, plans, and look at certain criteria that says after a certain year, lead was not allowed to be installed anyway in the ground as far as plumbing. Uh, there are certain areas, uh, that were built prior to those standards in the nineteen-eighties, nineteen-nineties that we have to focus on. Um, so we're doing our testing, and a lot of our testing actually is going to certain points within the distribution network and looking at the lines and investigating the lines on either side of the meter box to dig down and verify, actually, what the type of a line is. So we're going through that analysis here in the next several months. Our report will probably be available around August or so, and then we'll submit that, uh, report, uh, to our board and to the public so that they have an idea of what is going on in terms of the lead service line inventory. Now, it doesn't stop there. The next steps will be that you have to put a plan in place to actually remove any of those lead service lines that you've discovered on your public side, and you also have to work with, uh, your residents, your businesses on the private side to help them remove, not pay for their lines to remove them, but help them coordinate removal of those lines if that's something that they want to do. So this is a great program, uh, a, a great step in the right direction in terms of eliminating lead service lines. So today, um, and the question might be, well, how, how bad is that for Seguasa at this point? And I must tell you that, um, for some reason, when water lines were installed in this area, most of them were galvanized, which is good. It's good for us, non-led, basically. So that will prove out in the, uh, analysis and the final report that we've shared publicly. So that, that's the good news. Any questions for the questions?
Commissioner Wilkins. Yeah, you might have answered it. So at this point, you haven't identified a percentage of service lines that are lead.
Percentages overall?
Yes.
No, not yet, but we will have that, we will have that data.
Back over.
When we finish our actual field testing, which is coming up.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, sir.
Want to skip past this project?
No.
There you go. I think that's the biggest one that people want to know about. The biggest one that I know about, and I think that's the biggest.
We have no pictures?
Oh, we'll get the pictures here. We sure will.
It's a PowerPoint presentation.
So suffice to say, the I-85 sanitary sewer project, um, basically deals with capacity restrictions, if you will, throughout the sewer network, the sanitary sewer collection system, and the majority of the capacity issues, if you will, are really east of I-85 and affecting the city of Creedmore, which I know this, this commission is, is well aware of. It's a, a, a large project. There's a couple of maps coming up that we can talk about. We started to, I was handling this project when I walked in the door back in August of two thousand and nineteen. Um, it's a, it's a great project. We've taken a lot of strides, um, and we are, I would say about halfway done in terms of the lift to actually get us out the door for construction. And the construction then is going to be another three years, once we get the bids out and then the board puts, um, contractors under contract. The good news is we have, uh, ARCA funds that we're using for this. We received a grant of thirty-five million dollars, which is fantastic. Uh, we're also seeking, uh, additional funding from the USDA for a thirty-five million dollar low interest loan. Uh, we'll have some information coming up in our board meeting this week regarding the status of that. Our engineering design work is actually, uh, just about complete. I think it's about sixty days away, sixty days away from being a hundred percent complete, which is good, uh, based on deadlines that we have for these projects. Uh, we look to possibly get the first, uh, request or proposals out, uh, by July of this year. So we're just several months away. So for those of you that have been waiting since two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, um, we are at that point that, uh, it'll be, you know, quite the milestone when these, these bids go out and we, we bring in the bids, basically, for construction of this project. Uh, you have to hang on because it's still going to take us three years to build this project. But what's interesting right now, and I was just, uh, talking to Commissioner Karen about this, is that, uh, the discussion was the developer interest in this area, uh, in all the interests, commercial, residential, that's been going on, and, uh, Drew also mentioned the, the calls that he gets. I was telling Commissioner Karen that, uh, when I first started here, I'd get, uh, maybe a call once a quarter, uh, regarding that, you know, and development and interest and timetables. And fast forward to today, um, I'm spending eight to ten hours a week now working with developers and commercial industrial developers on what is available, what's not available, how soon can we get in, what's the timetable look like, are you really on schedule, those type of things. I get the impression that a lot of the, uh, the builders, the developers are looking to time up the completion of their projects with the completion of our projects. So you might think three years is a long time away, actually, to, to get all this work done, but when it actually comes to building and constructing, or the developments or sewer construction, isn't that long of a time period. So the, uh, the map that you have in front of you here basically just shows the details of the sewer replacement project. Um, it's, and there's a, I think there's a better map. There you go. I thought you might want to see a larger map on screen. So basically what we have here on the screen is we have pipes and pump stations which are being replaced, and, uh, we'll start on the far right side of the screen, the Joe Pete Pump Station, Force Main project that you see there. So we're actually, uh, installing a new, uh, pump station, which is going to be west of the existing pump station, and this is more or less a regional pump station in this area, and that is your, your main point of entry for all of the city of Creedmore, uh, where all the sewage basically flows to that point. So that's a major facility that's being upgraded. Uh, some of the lines that you see are force mains, the dotted yellow lines, and a force main means it's a pressure pipe instead of a gravity pipe. So I think that you can start to appreciate all the dotted lines, the yellow dotted lines, which are the force mains. Uh, moving to the left and just above is the I-85 pump station and force main. This is, uh, a pump station, a new pump station that's going to be installed, uh, on the opposite side of the northern interceptor, and this will actually collect, uh, sewage flow from the northeast side of that region and bring it south along the roadway there. Moving down to the, uh, bottom part of the screen, the East Middleton Pump Station, Force Main, uh, we basically have a new, uh, pump station being created at that point. we basically have a new pump station being created at that point to replace existing pump station. And then as we move over to the left, you see the southern interceptor. We'll talk about that next. Basically, all the pipe that you see in purple is basically gravity sewer. So we are pumping with the yellow dotted lines, if you will, the force mains into the crossings of Butler lift station, and then it flows by gravity through the southern interceptor. And eventually off screen, you can't see this, but downstream of the southern interceptor line to the far left of the screen is our wastewater treatment plant. So everything is flowing basically to the southwest, to our wastewater treatment plant. Moving up on the screen and back to the right is the northern interceptor, the purple line is a gravity line. Basically, we have pipe upgrades going on in that area, basically enlarging the size of the pipe. There is a pipe that goes under I-85, so it's not really shown here, but it's right next to the I-85 lift station. And we decided not to cross I-85 in two places. We just decided to do it in one, just because of the complexity of doing a bore underneath the highway. So that, hence why we have kind of a separation in our system up there to collect flow on the west side of I-85 and then collect flow on the east side of I-85, separating that. So that's, that's the overview of the I-85 sanitary sewer improvement project. I will stop here to see if you have any questions on the graphics or pump stations, and then there's a schedule coming up following this, if you'd like to take a look at that.
Any questions at this end? Commissioner White? I think you have a question. Mayor Protem.
So Scott, this project, and I know you don't have a crystal ball up there with you. The, what is the expectant life of this project? How long, once we get this project done, how long will it be before, God forbid, we hit this problem again where we are out of capacity?
Well, I appreciate you asking that question for this reason. Number one, the design that we did for this project not only addresses today's problems, but we took a look at comprehensively the area that Seguassa serves as far as all the communities and looking forward for at least 25, 30 years into their plans as far as their comprehensive plans and their zoning plan. And we looked at what the capacity demands would be based on those zoning plans, those comprehensive plans. We did the hydraulic analysis, and then we built the project basically to accept that capacity and that analysis for the next 25, 30 years, looking forward. So to answer your question, and it depends on the amount of capacity that is taken up on an annual basis, so I think that you can appreciate scalability. If there is slow growth, but you have longer years, if you have quicker growth, you have shorter years in terms of your capacity. But I think suffice to say, a good marker right now is to say 20 to 25 years from the end of construction, if you will, in terms of capacity abilities, and then you're going to be looking at 30, 40, 50, 70 years in terms of the useful life of those pipes in those facilities as well. So I hope that answers your question.
It does.
Okay, very good.
Anything else at Commissioner Wilkins?
Scott, on the map, I noticed Wilkins Lift and the 11th Street Lift, according to the color code, you're going to abandon those?
I believe that's on the schedule, yes. Because we've designed, part of the design is to take into account, is there anything that we can do to abandon lift stations along the way based on the new gravity sewers that are being put in? So some might say, oh, good, we're reducing costs because you're not maintaining those. But when you look at the size of the pump stations that we're building, for Joe P., for example, and Middleton, it kind of evens out in terms of your cost exchange.
Will the old pump station areas be reclaimed, that works all the way, cleared off?
Yes, we, the current.
Landscaped.
Yeah, the current design requirement is that we will remove all structures. I think it's two feet below surface, maybe even three feet. So you'll just end up with basically a grass pad in that area. So at some point, we will have that eyesore of the Joe P. pump station as you drive past it.
Any other questions? All right.
Okay, the all-important schedule here. A lot to take in. I think that, I think that the things I really want you to focus on are the fact that we've maintained this model for the last two and a half years, and we are right on schedule, which is great, considering all the work that is necessary for this design and for this project. We've actually, based on how well we're doing on the schedule with the design work, able to pull some of the milestones back a little bit closer, allowing us to get the project out sooner. Something else that's driving this project is basically the ARPA deadlines that we have for the funding that we receive. So their deadlines are relatively tight in terms of this project. And what does that mean? That means that there's certain goals that we have to achieve as far as getting the projects out and the project under contract, which I think is by the end of this calendar year. And then we also have to have substantial construction finished within 24 months of when we sign the contract, so the end of '26, so we have two years. So it's going to be a fast-track project, more or less. So based on these requirements, or basically the funding requirements and the funding split between USDA and ARPA, basically, we split the project up into two construction packages. So you'll see those on the screen here as CP1 and CP2. Those are related back to the funding sources that we have and the funding sources we hope to get with the USDA as far as the loan. I think that overall, you'll see that we're very aggressive in 2024, the things that we need to push out. One of the things that I think is going to be very helpful is going to be a public meeting that we have scheduled in March, April, it looks like. We have a Seguassa board meeting coming up in March, where we'll have CDM Smith, our design engineer, do a full presentation on this project, and it will be recorded. We'll go a little bit deep into the project. It's going to be a great opportunity to learn more about the design of the project. And then we're actually going to have public meetings, open houses, that the public can come in and take a look and ask questions. How does this affect me, my backyard, my street, my front yard, those types of things? So that's coming up in April. And then we'll be pushing out the construction packages, as you can see down below as far as the bidding and award. And then we have final completion right now. I focus more on January 1st, 2028. I think that we might be able to beat that schedule, which would be great. And there's opportunities along the way, based on the type of construction and where you are geographically, that there may be opportunities for developments, construction to tie into certain lines that are already done. So some of these projects are, you have to wait until the end. Other portions of the project are, you may be able to utilize some of the existing, the capacity, the new capacity that is now opened up. And those are the questions I get the most from commercial developers, if you will, how soon, how soon and where can we get in, so, which is, which is good. I think one last graphic I have here for you is just something else that's showing you, the legend shows construction package number one, which is ARPA, and construction package number two, which is USDA. So let's focus on what we call CP number one, ARPA. ARPA has the tighter constraints for us in terms of funding and the completion. And you'll basically see in your red text on your screen, your dotted line, that is construction package one. So we will be focusing on the Joe P. pump station, the East Middleton pump station, and eliminating the Joe P. booster pump station, which is no longer needed, and then the force mains, the 24-inch and the 20-inch, to basically supply and feed those upgraded pump stations. Now, you've heard me possibly say it in the past that you have to build pipes downstream before you can actually have your pump stations go into the pipes. Now, some may look at this and say, well, it seems like you're building pump stations and pipes to nowhere in this first phase, before you even have your downstream pipes ready. Well, these projects, CP1 and CP2, will actually be tandem projects, will be in parallel. CP1 will start first, CP2 will be right on its heels. But there will be a case where during this package, you'll end up with the pump stations basically being completed and on hold until the other work is done as far as the downstream CP2. So it's quite, it's quite a dance, I'll say, because of the large construction package that we have, the areas that we serve, the constraints on the funding, and all the interactions we have with local communities and the railroads and the NCDOT that we're working with here. Any questions on CP1 and 2?
Commissioner Kaczynski, Mayor Protem, I'm sorry, still getting used to that.
Okay. So for the citizen question I have, how much disruption in traffic is there going to be with this project? I mean, are we going to be tearing up roads and causing traffic jams all over the city, or it's going to be like, okay, we're doing it here today, and then tomorrow, these people will be affected, and I just?
I think there's going to be plenty of disruption for everybody.
Okay, that's good.
For everyone. A great question. I think that some of the work that you have as far as the pump station lines you see in CP1 are on the edge of the roadway, the right of way, so it'll be, it'll be a traffic maintained situation. But I think most of the residents from the area will learn where the construction is. We are going to be very aggressive as an organization to let everyone know daily where we are, what streets are open, what streets are closed, and for how long, so that people can avoid the area. We'll be doing a new service in the future that anyone can sign up for, kind of like a notify me, that when we put out these alerts, they can get these traffic alerts or other construction alerts to know what is going on. You, everyone knows how much time we've spent the last four years to get us to this point, and it's a good thing. This is a great project. It's going to be great for the region. Please remember that during the construction over two years, when there's dust and dirt and detours to help us get there as well. That's going to be the challenging part. In fact, we've had an opportunity to sit down with the town of Butler in the last three or four months to talk about all the disruption and the road closures, for example, and what kind of constraints do we need to put in place so we're not affecting their festivals that they already have planned, their downtown events, so that we're not closing streets down and causing problems? So we're, we're trying to bring that all together as well. Plus, you know, the schools and all the agencies and businesses that we have to work with. There'll be a lot of dust flying in the next couple of years.
The other question that I have, and I wrote it down, and I've got to read it because I'm like, is there any idea how many people this will bring into the city after the re-allocation of the water in the next, in the first three years? Do you have any idea?
That's a great question. I think that suffice to say, we as a utility coordinate our efforts and support the efforts of the city, the communities we serve. So I think that with, with that model, we can say that we know that there's interest, and we work with your planning department to identify that, but at this point, have no idea what the numbers may look like.
Okay. All right.
But I know that we'll be open for business. Let's put it that way.
And the DOT is going to work closely with CDM Smith on all the road issues that's, it's, they will coordinate the DOT, not Seguassa?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Commissioner Wilkins?
Scott, I know your finance director's not here, but can you speak to where Seguassa is on debt service? If you can.
I don't think I can speak to that without having the budget book in front of me as far as debt service in terms of schedules. Yep, yeah, I just don't have that information in front of me. Something we will be able to show is in our upcoming finance committee meetings for our upcoming budgets, we'll have that information available for the public, and if you would like a follow-up, I can send you a copy of that information. But I think that you can see that in our current budget book as well that's available for this fiscal year.
All right, I guess we move on, system development fee policy.
Are we there? Are we clicking together? Okay. There you go. Appreciate your help. Thank you. Don't want to gloss over this. I know it's the last item on the presentation this afternoon. It's an important one, though. Seguassa has a system development fee policy slash allocation policy that was updated in September 2016. Suffice to say, the changes in the state law regarding STF payments, system development fee payments, and the collection of that payment requires Seguassa to modify its policy. So this is something that Seguassa's been working on for many months to figure out how to bring state law and existing STF policy together and procedures, and it's been quite a task, quite honestly. Most recently, the board approved in January a draft system development fee policy, and part of the provision would be that comments would be accepted from Seguassa's member governments for a period of no less than 30 days. That 30 days expired at 5:00 o'clock last evening, and I would like everyone in this room to know that I've had some great conversations with each community basically that we serve to talk about this policy, what it means, and the coordination that is behind this moving forward. So based on the information I've received and the conversations I've had, I've scheduled this item for the board on Tuesday night to revisit, to have an opportunity to talk about some of the comments and coordination and my recommendation to the board, and the board will decide whether or not they want to move forward with the policy as written. Thank you.
Right, any questions? Commissioner Wilkins?
Scott, I know my colleague, Mayor Protem Kaczynski, had some input into this, but can you speak to, in layman's terms, how customers are now billed by actual usage, just for public knowledge?
Customers are billed by actual usage?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, sure. So not so much related to the system development fee, but a little bit different topic.
Yep.
Okay, sure. So let me reach back to, it was last year, commissioners, help me on this one as far as our commissioners, as far as the rate model. So let me just refer back to the rate model. It was adopted, was adopted previously to go into effect last July, or basically the beginning of our fiscal year, starting in July. And the primary differences between the two models, the previous model was such that we had a certain amount of water usage or gallons provided in what we call the base fee of our rate. Okay, so you have a base fee, and you have basically usage or consumption as part of how the fee is made up. The base fee is a combination of your debt service, your operating supplies, and so on and so forth. And within that base fee, you had 2,000 gallons basically that you would use as part of that charge. Well, it was, it was mentioned for many years, and I think Commissioner Kaczynski and maybe others mentioned that we need to look at this model, because there's those that don't use 2,000 gallons per month. They may use 1,000 gallons per month. So we did, over the course of about a year, we did a review of different models and recommendations. And the board last year, before the beginning of the fiscal year, actually promoted a change to the model as far as the rate model. We still have the components basically for a base charge, that is a carrying charge, and also consumption. And I'm getting, I'm getting to your answer here, so I just wanted to explain some background. What we did with our, our base charge is we lowered our base charge, if you will, to what is our actual cost for the base charge, and took out the 2,000 gallons that was part of that base charge. So we separated those and said, okay, there still has to be a base charge for that, that service to cover debt service and other obligations. And now there's going to be a scale of usage, basically, based on the size of your meter and the number of gallons that you use per month is what you're going to pay for. So we looked across the user base, and we tried to zero in on what your average residential bill was going to be per month as far as gallons of usage. And then we looked at that and we said, let's look at that as a tier one, and let's look at the above that usage as being a tier two. So we moved to that model this last year, and so far, the model is very steady for us. We called it revenue neutral for us, for the organization. It was interesting, the first couple of months this was introduced, we had, you never really have people coming in and thanking you for lowering the rates. Okay, that doesn't happen that often. But we did have customers come in, which I thought was interesting, and they would want customer service to check their bill because it's lower now.
Lower.
We don't know why it's lower. What happened here? What's going on? Is this going to be consistent? So that was, that was our way of knowing, well, at least, well, you know, we have some customers that are paying attention to that in our consumer, but they're also thankful that it was lower for that. On the opposite end, you get some rate payers that are expecting 5, 6, 7, 8, 10,000 gallons per month, and they're going to see, you know, their rates.
Significantly.
But a greater cost for that, if you will. So it all kind of balances.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make it clear for public knowledge. Thank you.
Any other questions for Scott? As always, I wouldn't have your job for anything. But you do an excellent job, and you're ready for it. So thank you for your dedication.
I appreciate that, and I would just like to say thank you on behalf of Seguassa Chair and the, and the board members here as well. And just lastly, before I go, I just want you and the public, and more of the public, that this is not- the public, more of the public, that this is not just a one-stop, a one-time opportunity once a year to come and talk to the board. I have the opportunity all the time with the city manager, the planning staff, and the commissioners, to be here to support your efforts based on what the utility is doing. And I feel many times that we are your city utility, quite honestly, in terms of the projects that we're doing, looking at development, the growth, the programs that we're running together. So I think it's a really good relationship, and I see that continuing. So I just, I thank you, city manager, for your input and your staff time that you give us. And I know that we're always just a phone call away, aren't we, from anything?
Yeah, sure.
Again, thank you so much. Enjoy your afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Alright, at this time, we will recognize, let me make sure I get everything right here, stormwater utility rate steady. Jennifer with Rafftelis.
Oh my God, I love Rafftelis.
And we're gonna have you pronounce your last name.
[laughing]
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Jennifer Tavances. I work with Rafftelis Financial Consultants. And I'm contracted by the City of Creemore in coordination with Granville County, Person County, Town of Butner, and Town of STEM to serve as the Stormwater Utility Services Manager. So what that translates to is support with management and administration of the stormwater utility for each jurisdiction, support with various regulatory compliance activities for the city, and lots of annual reporting associated with regulatory compliance. And then at certain points in time, we also do kind of financial planning support and rate-making support for the stormwater utility. And that is something that we have done this year, and that's what I'm here to speak with you all about today. Just a brief agenda, what I wanna talk through is kind of review the city's stormwater program. You'll probably hear me say this three or four times, but it has been 12 years since we set up the stormwater utility and established the rates that are still in effect today. So since it's been a while, I'll do an overview of the fee structure and how that works for the city. I have a couple of example properties to demonstrate how that fee is calculated. Talk about fee adjustments that I'm bringing before you today, and the program that would be supported with those fee adjustments. And then an implementation plan should the city decide to move forward with this adjustment. Alright, so just some highlights of the city's stormwater program. First and foremost is maintenance, repair, replacement, renewal of the drainage infrastructure that is critical to flood control, public safety, protecting the community and the quality of life here in the city. Those related services include street sweeping and leaf and brush collection. The city has a municipal separate storm sewer system, MS4 for short, permit that essentially allows it to discharge stormwater into receiving water bodies. And there are several activities that must occur to maintain and compliance with that permit. So some of those are sort of softer activities, like education and outreach and engagement, so that the public is kind of aware of water quality concerns and water quality improvement opportunities. And then some of those are more kind of on the ground. So of course, maintaining that system that conveys stormwater and ensuring water quality through construction, events, and after construction. These are all components of the stormwater program that the city manages every single day. So that's all kind of related to your infrastructure. There are also a number of water quality regulations that the city must comply with in addition to the MS4 permit. And primarily, those relate to the FALs rules, otherwise known as the FALs nutrient management strategy. There are requirements for new development that's being put in place that the city kind of manages and oversees. And there are requirements that relate to existing development that went into place many years ago, so really between 2007 and 2012. There's kind of a backwards-looking element of those rules. And I'll talk a little bit more about how the city complies with those in a moment. You do have some dues and memberships with associations that support various elements of the program. So the Upper Neuse River Basin Association, apologies for all this, the acronym here, I know it's a lot. The Stormwater Association of North Carolina, and the Clean Water Education Partnership, those are all groups that provide regulatory support, policy support, and education and outreach services that the city takes part in. And then, of course, a kind of a critical component of the program that ensures the compliance with and ongoing functionality of the system is all of the development review and just administration that mostly happens from the community development department, just to make sure that the changing nature of the community is well-supported by the stormwater infrastructure. Alright, so here in the city, stormwater is a utility service. We just heard from Seguassa, and there was some discussion about updating the meter infrastructure. Stormwater is not a meter service. We don't specifically measure the amount of stormwater runoff coming off of every property. But we do have a way to calculate the relative impact of each property on the drainage system. And so when this utility was set up 12 years ago, we designed a rate structure that has three components. It has a fixed fee that applies to every single property within the city. It has an impervious area fee, so a fee that's charged based on how much hard surface there is on a property that, of course, blocks any rainwater from infiltrating into the ground and causing it to runoff instead. And we have a fee for gross area, or total parcel size. There are some elements of the program and costs borne by the program that are not as directly related to impervious area, but to the overall size of the property. And so there's a component of the fee for that as well. This is a somewhat more sophisticated rate structure than some communities have. So I'll just kind of point out that the fixed fee, like I said, that's flat for every property. The other two vary depending on the size and the amount of impervious area on each. All single-family properties within the city are billed for one unit of impervious area. So that creates some consistency and some simplification of the rate structure for the vast majority of your properties. And then the gross area fee is designed to kind of be the same for everybody who's got up to two acres. And then for between 2 and 10 acres, it's twice that $25 fee. Between 10 and 100, it's three times that fee. So it's sort of a declining block rate structure, if you wanna think about it in that terminology, to not overly burden some of the big open spaces within the city, how it was designed. The stormwater fee is billed annually on the tax bill. Alright, so just a couple of examples. These are under your current rates. So a typical kind of single-family residential property within the city has that $12 fixed fee. One unit of impervious area, it's called an ERU, equivalent residential unit, that's $70. And then the gross area charge for up to two acres is $25. So that's $107 on the tax bill for the stormwater utility fee for all of the single, or most of the single-family properties. It could vary a little bit if they have a larger lot. That same rate structure applies to commercial properties. So just kind of for comparison here, you can see a relatively small commercial property. It's still well under an acre size-wise. So the kind of the fixed fee and the gross area component of the fee are the same, as you see for that residential property. But this one has a lot more impervious area on it. And you can see that those impervious surfaces measured in blue in the picture here, it's got about three times as much impervious area as a typical house. So that part of the fee is bigger for this property. So in total, they are billed $247. And then another property, a little bit over an acre, but still in that one, that first block for the gross area charge, but with a lot more impervious area, this property is billed $807 a year currently. So I'll kind of remind you of these amounts in a few moments when we talk about potential adjustment to these rates. But I thought it was worthwhile to show kind of the relative costs for properties that are developed in different ways. Right, so for my second mention, I will remind you, these fees have been in place since 2012. And at that time, the program was set up to really be self-sufficient. And we did, my firm, although I was much younger then, so I was working with some other folks, did cost projections for the various components of the program out into the future. We did not ever expect the fee to be in place for this long, but it was meant to hold steady for a number of years, maybe five or six years, when it was originally put in place. At that time, there were a lot of unknowns about how audible compliance would look in the future. And there are still some unknowns, but we have, we're in a relatively steady, stable place at the moment. Of course, over time, as with all of the city's programs and all of the city's costs, those costs have grown. The revenue stream has only grown insofar as there's new development within the city. But those costs are really outpacing revenue by this point. So I have worked with community development folks, and public works, and finance, and city manager, and we've been talking about what those costs, stormwater-related costs, will look like out into the near-term future. And so I'm bringing a recommendation for a fairly significant increase to those fees to cover the current costs. And I'll say that the way we've kind of calculated fees this time around is with the goal of having them be able to stay in place for another six years, essentially. So notwithstanding some really big change that is unforeseeable at this point, that's kind of the goal we were working toward in calculating this recommended change. So I know, I'm gonna jump right to the punchline. What is the recommendation? And we'll kind of close the loop in the next couple of slides. So the recommendation is to change, to keep the same rate structure, so we work the same way. The fixed fee, which is currently $12, would be increased to $25 per parcel. The impervious area fee, which is currently $70 per ERU, per unit of impervious area, would increase to $131. And the gross area fee, which is currently 25, would increase to $55. So it's not exactly a doubling, but most of these are about doubling under this recommendation. Of course, given the rate structure, it impacts different properties a little bit differently, depending on their impervious area and their gross area, of course. So I just share these same examples with you again as a point of comparison. I won't maybe walk through all of it, but you'll see kind of the residential increase is 97%. So that's just about the doubling there. The small commercial increase is a little bit less, 91%, and then the larger commercial increase is still less, but of course, still significant, at 88%.
Before you move on, Mr. Wilkins?
You know, you said fairly significant. I think 97% is a little bit more than fairly.
Significant.
Pretty significant. You necessarily have to, I mean, projecting out six years, but is it necessary to go out that much now?
That is certainly something that this group can, we can discuss. We can, that may not be your preference at this point.
It may be mine.
In talking with staff, there was a consideration of, you know, and this came up earlier today. This is the year that the tax reevaluation is happening. And while this is unrelated to tax value, it does show up on the tax bill. So it may be kind of a timely moment to make a change now, as there's other sort of communications happening and tax bills are changing a little bit more broadly. And if we took a step to raise rates like this now, we may be able to hold them steady until this cycle comes up again six years from now. I will point out, I don't mean to jump ahead, but I'll point out that, actually, I'm gonna go one more slide. Even if we do something a little bit more incremental, there is a big gap between the current revenue stream and the current stormwater costs. So we can certainly, and I have modeled an alternate scenario if we wanna look at it. But to sort of fully cover costs next year, we would still need to see a big increase.
I'm concerned about additional sticker shock, if you will.
I understand.
Mayor Protem. So I'm looking at this revenue requirement versus revenue. I'm trying to figure out the expense that we, I know that payroll for public works and community development are involved in the cost of the stormwater fee, aside from everything else.
Yes.
Do you have a comparison, well, is that like revenue requirements versus revenue? I believe that we're probably at just above $300,000. Is that where the intersection is, where it jumps?
That's about $320,000 is the revenue for this year, FY '24, or the past year, I should say.
And since every property owner, whether they have property, whether they have a dwelling on it or not, pays the same rates as we have them as of right now. So if we increase communities onto some of the vacant land, they would pick up the stormwater fee that we would have right now, and we would still be at that same junction?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Alright?
Alright. So I just wanted to kind of highlight the breakdown of these program costs, because I know these are big numbers, and there's a sticker shock component to it. For FY, I know this graph is a little bit, but for the FY '24, '25 timeframe, there is about $50,000 of this total revenue requirement associated with regulatory compliance. That includes FALs Lake rules and some of the kind of reporting and whatnot associated with regulatory compliance. There is just under $200,000 associated with program management. So that's where most of the community development staff and related costs are captured. There's just under $300,000 in There's just under $300,000 in kind of system maintenance-related costs. That's where most of the public works, or that's where the public works-related costs are captured. A little bit in program, about $10,000 in program administration, which is the rest of my firm's contracts. And I think there is one other thing captured in there as well, related to permitting. And then another $50,000, which is relatively new, that you can see in this graph, that is kind of dedicated to system renewal. So that's, that's the sort of light bar on top. So that's all the cost breakdown. And I sort of said this already, but I'll highlight if exists, is, well, any rate increase that we kind of see this year would change the revenue that we see in FY '25. It would, regardless of to what degree we change rates, it would kind of hit the tax bill at the same time as the tax reevaluation. And again, barring some things totally unforeseen, those rates that I presented would be good for a good long while, about six years. But I would certainly recommend kind of revisiting if there are significant program changes, significant changes to the regulatory environment, that sort of thing. Sorry, I think this goes with my alternate, which is not what we're looking at. There would be no shortfall if we were to adopt these rates that I just presented. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions or enter into discussion.
Is this, this 12-year gap in here, is that kind of strictly what we did? Or is this kind of a trend that had fallen on other municipalities too?
The other jurisdictions that are involved in the same utility group with you also, Butler, STEM, Granville County, and Person County, they have also not changed their rates during that 12-year period. Certainly, there are many, many jurisdictions with stormwater utilities across the state and across the country. And I will say, they are, they tend to be less well, less consistently updated than water and sewer rates. But in my experience, 12 years is a pretty long time to go without an adjustment.
All right. Mr. Wilkins, any questions?
You just asked my question, because I was gonna be like, why did we get to this point? 12 years, and all of a sudden, someone raised a flag and said, oh, by the way, it's been 12 years, let's double everybody's rate on this.
Yeah, that was my concern, too.
I agree with Commissioner Wilkins. I think that's just a huge jump.
Mayor Protem.
I understand this, and that it is affected by the payroll of public works and community development. But since we cannot grow for at least three to five more years, I don't think this is the time to do this. We may need to take a look at it once the I-85 sanitary sewer project is done. We do have a lot in, I mean, I live in a neighborhood where there's no, I'm paying a stormwater fee, but we don't have any, I don't know that there's that much stormwater maintenance going on in our subdivision. Davenport, does Davenport have curb and gutter? And you don't have curb and gutter?
I don't have curb and gutter.
Do you have curb and gutter? Good, okay. I mean, that's, I'd like to look at, so there's no street sweeping in my subdivision, there's no street sweeping in his or hers. So, and I understand that it takes manpower and it takes payroll. I would like to hear from the directors and the city manager at some point before we make this decision.
Commissioner Albright.
Yes, I agree with Commissioner Katinsky. I don't think it's probably a grand time to go with this.
We just said county, didn't we?
To go with this, this rate. So I think we need to take a look at it and see what, if there's a happy medium that we could come to for it. And I'm not really sure the whole understanding is to, why it wasn't that for the big, yes, yeah.
Ms., I'm sorry.
I'm in my sophomore year, so I need to ask these questions. So, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Wilkins.
I agree with some colleagues, a question. Are you seeking these increases, the other municipalities you mentioned, Granville County, Barton, et cetera?
They have not changed their rates since 2012.
Well, are you seeking to?
Oh, am I seeking to? Sorry.
I'm sorry.
The county is in this same process, thinking about the, oh, I should say, for all of the jurisdictions, the costs have, stormwater-related costs have outstripped the amount of revenue coming in for these utilities. Some of the jurisdictions have decided not to make a change this year. So they're gonna continue to fund the difference through the general fund. The county is thinking about the options, but hasn't, haven't had this discussion with their elected officials yet. So that's where it stands, kind of ongoing consideration.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Well, I'm gonna voice a comment. I think we need to raise them. I understand what everybody's saying. But I do agree that I'm not ready to go up the limit you're talking about. But I would like to see us go up where we're catching, where we should be for 2024, just to keep us from having to make it even bigger the next time. That will at least get us coverage through where we are at this particular date, and then we can reexamine maybe in six years. Mr. Wilkins.
Yeah, last comment. I agree with the mayor, something more intermediate might work rather than this 97% increase.
I just worry that when time does come to increase, if we don't bump a little now, we're really gonna be shocked. Well, I'm sorry, the people that are sitting in this dais at that point will be really shocked. Any other questions? Thank you, ma'am. I wish your news was better, but we appreciate the update.
It's the nature of my work. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, is there something we can look at during the budget deliberations, other options on how we might spread it out, or how we might do that, buddy?
Yeah, that, I think that would be, I hate to stay right where we are. We need to do something.
If we can make a number, we'll give you some lunch and get some more direction.
Yeah, thank you, sir. All right. At this time, we will move on to Granville County Board of Commissioners Chairman Tim Karen and Commissioner Russ May, Jimmy Gooch, and Tony Kozart. You can come up or say or do what you want to do.
Okay. So in the interest of time, I know we've got fast, now we got slow, and lunch is coming next. So Commissioner Tim Karen, current chairman of the Board of Commissioners, appreciate the invitation here today. I just want to talk to you real quickly about partnerships. I'm not a write-it-down kind of guy. People have heard me say here and there at different meetings and that, you heard from the school system superintendent, we need to utilize every space we've got 10 times over. You know, the ideas of building these silos, of having a senior center over here and a community center over there and a school system on another spot, we need to get away from that. You know, I use the system, school system and the senior center. They're both required to put education, recreation, and nutrition into their schedules. Same thing the senior does, senior center does, that nutrition for the seniors, activities for the seniors, education for the seniors. There's no reason that they have to be in two separate buildings. You know, shared parking lots, shared HVACs, yes, you can have a locked door between the one hallway and another hallway. In 1970, county of Wake put in place called Communities in Our Schools. You've got, when they build a new school building, not only do they have to have an art component, they have to have community use. You've got school systems in Wake County, Briar Creek Elementary is the perfect example I can speak to, Wake County School, that has a senior center, a community center, and an elementary school on one lot. The entrance to the senior center, access to the community center are on one side, and the entrance to the schools are on another side, and it works perfectly. When the school is not in place, unlock a double door, bingo, you got a double gymnasium that you can access from the side where the senior center slash community center comes in. Those are the kind of things, when we talk about tearing down silos, that I want to see. We've got the 10-year CIP, we're ripe for another park in the Southern End. You know, we've got the South Granville Athletic Association that takes care of recreation for the Southern End. And let's be honest, that's predominantly a Butler-based organization. They use the schools at the BAP, fantastic, yeah, BAP, I said it right, at the BAP, Butler Athletic Park, is predominantly their field. They used to use ours a little bit before it changed up from a baseball perspective. They had the two little fields at B.C. Roberts, you know, that's gone by the wayside. So as far as looking at the future, Stan talked about in the Holly school plan that there was a big community portion of that recreation space. I'm saying let's just skip the whole Holly redo on the school and let's build an aquatic center. Okay? Community-focused, city-driven, we're gonna need you all, the staff, the, you know, the bookings and all that kind of thing. But there's no reason that our community can't have an indoor pool, all right, in Granville County. Our folks have got to go to Wake Forest or to Henderson to do these kind of things. All right, you know, you do have an outside pool in Oxford, but from a pools perspective, unless you're in one of these big highfalutin neighborhoods down in the Southern End or in Oxford Park, our folks don't have that access to that kind of thing. Yes, we can go swim in the lake at the state park, but that's, you know, that kind of thing.
We also have a swimming pool at the South Granville Conference.
Thank you for mentioning that. Yes, you do. You have a paid availability for the pool, and I was a member there for many years just for the pool, my own family. But, you know, and again, I don't want to belabor time, but I'm gonna be looking to y'all to join in these partnerships. You have already done a great job with us providing space for our SRO, excuse me, our Veteran Services Officer. You've partnered with the school in providing the actual personnel, but we pay their salaries for the school's SROs, not the VSO. So there's huge partnerships going on. If we look at increasing our recreational capacities, you're gonna need a water and sewer facility, putting it out necessarily, you know, in the sticks is not necessarily gonna work, because you've got to be able to serve that facility from a, you know, bathrooms perspective, you know, granted, you could put it in a place that's got purgability and all that kind of things. But a community-driven location, this, where we're standing right now, works about the best, as far as my own opinion. In the Southern End here, nothing slighted against, you know, the ton of Butler or STEM, but from ease of accessibility from the Franklin County line, Wake County line, the Youngsville addresses, this is the place that you would probably wind up heading in. So the bleed over that we've got with people having to leave our county, not only for their recreational needs, but also their, you know, their dining experiences and where they go to shop and all those, you know, the ancillary things, I think that if we could bring a little bit of that back, that'd be great. Just want to talk to you again about tearing down silos, the partnerships that we could have. Russ has got a bunch of prepared marks. You know, on the stormwater fee, I think one of the things that we've got to understand about the rain tax, as I like to call it when I was on the board, we haven't changed it in a long time, and it's gonna be a big impediment. But I hope that you looked very closely at what is actually being done on that topic, as far as are they actually out, you know, you talked about not having curb and gutter in your neighborhood. Is that rain fee actually going to fix pipes? Probably not. Most of it's administrative cost. You know, administrative costs, compliance with rules, submitting paperwork, you know, and it's a huge amount of money. And the folks that, you know, in our jurisdictions that are facing these Falls Lake rules, the amount of money that we put into protecting that watershed and talking to other communities, you know, if you look at Apex and, you know, Holly Springs and those kind of folks that are, you know, down in the Southern End, although they get their water from Jordan, City Raleigh property that gets their water from Falls Lakes, they are protecting some of the watershed, but as far as the actual impact on our individual citizens, we're bearing the blood front on that, on that thing. So I just hope you do take a look at that. But as long as you're gonna be looking at that, and when you look at the whole kit and the bootle, where Actalis has been our provider for that service for, since inception, it's always good to throw it out there and see what else is available from a bidding perspective. Nothing against that company perspective in particular, but, you know, when you have a contract with somebody for 12 years, it's probably sometime to take a look at the whole shooting match. So I'll turn it over to Commissioner Russ May, previous chairman of the Board of Commissioners, unless you got a question for him.
Yeah, before you leave, Mr. Wilkins.
Mr. Karen, I think that Aquatic Center would be a great idea. My question is, what percentage of partnership would you be looking for from the city of Creedmore?
Just keep saying yes, because I'm gonna ask everybody. And it's not necessarily a financial thing. I mean, it might become an issue of, you know, we're gonna need your recreational staff to be the booking agent.
Gotcha.
I'm gonna ask the hospital system. There's no reason that we shouldn't have an aquatic aqua therapy division in our hospital at Granville Health System. We've got a small aquatic ability at a competitor of ours in Oxford that does a little bit of therapy for knees and hips and those kind of things. There's no reason that Granville Health Systems can't get in that business. So I'm gonna ask them for that partnership as well. Our school systems, ask them for the partnership, not only for the land, because I want to put it at Holly, but that's just Tim Karen talking. You know, I'm gonna ask the schools to partner, because of course, it would be great if we had a swim team, you know, that would be able to utilize that facility as well. So there's no number. If, next question is, how much does a pool cost? You can spend anywhere from, you know, a couple million bucks to $80 million. So it's gonna be in that range.
I think the Holly Aquatic Center would be good.
Mayor Protem.
Tim, I remember back years ago when you were commissioner and we were trying to get a YMCA here. What, is that out of the question that they would do it?
So Y is a proprietary, you have to go to the Y and get buy-in. You know, and we had, at that point in time, I think it was pre-'08, so there was the Parkway project when they first came forward, that developer was actually willing to put in the land portion of that into that project. And of course, you know, when folks hear that somebody's gonna be getting something, their first thing they want to do is say, oh, I want that too, and try and get to it. So there was a big competition between myself driving that initiative and one or two individuals to partner. And YMCA and Henderson would have been our closest Y, that would have been our jurisdictional territory. And they got such a bad taste in their mouth from two different dogs yip and at their heels, they decided to walk away from the project.
Okay.
So it is privately funded.
Yeah.
Organization, so as far as that goes, I mean, it's not, not that you get them to do it for you instead of, it's a two-pronged approach. The same thing if you go to like an Optimus Club.
Right.
You can get that, or, you know, some of those type of organizations that do have pools and those kind of things. I mean, it's just the luck of the draw, you get somebody who's very philanthropic in their community that wants to come forward, you know, donate a huge chunk of money. It's not free, you have to pay for that. Basically, you build it and then turn the keys over kind of a thing, so.
So last year, when Chris Horgan was the director for the Recreation Department, he sent out a survey to all the members, asking them how they thought our, our new recreation center was doing. 90% of all the responses came back, we want a pool. We want a pool, we want an indoor pool, we want a pool, we want a pool. There was one response that said splash pad, but most of them were pool. But, so it definitely would be something that the citizens in Creedmore, I know of already, that they would absolutely want. But we're not anywhere near this, because when I was at the joint meeting the other night, I mean, we're still waiting on the grant for Holly, I heard you say Holly. We've got a long way to go, and the school would have to sell the property to the county?
There's no reason they can't keep it.
But they would be under liability as well. Oh, I see what you're saying. If there was a swim team, yes, okay, they could have an interest in it also.
The ownership of it and the maintenance of it, and who does what as far as the land actually goes, we'll call that out with.
But we're a far way away from this yet.
Yeah, we've got MOUs and MOAs and all kinds of fun acronyms to put in, you know, and I know that, you know, we talked about from a recreation standpoint, even if, even if that grant does not come through, we need to do something, when I say we, the county and the school system needs to do something to address our field situation for the middle school. So if you go just down the road to Falls Lake Academy, they've got a turf field, the ROI on that field is far and above grass, because you can use it when it rains, you can use it when it's cold, and it's, you know, it's turf, it's turf.
And I will tell you, in 2004, Firestone offered to do a rubberized turf field at South Granville High School, and the principal at the time refused to allow it. And the school superintendent at that time said, you can't do it at one school unless you do it at the other. You can get the grant, but we will decide with school. Plus, then we talk about the track field at South Granville High School. That track field has never been updated, it's still asphalt. It is horrible. And the only other thing that I can say is, I don't know what the citizens of Creedmore are gonna say when we turn down the fire department and say, we don't have money to help you build your firehouse, but we're gonna do this and partner with the county. That's all just things that are going through my head right now. I'm not saying yes, I'm not saying no, I'm not saying anything, it's just that public safety. It's just that public safety versus recreation is going to be controversial at best.
We've been an elected official for over 20 years.
Oh, I know you're used to it.
Tired of not getting any of the fun stuff because we're so worried about bringing the vote up.
Okay.
It's time that we have the things that other communities seem to manage to put together.
Okay, you're right.
I know that it's a burden on a lot of folks when we talk about the taxing standpoint, but we need to shoot hard. We need to figure this out. I mean, even when I go through the budget, you know, shaking my head about, you know, just the simple fact that the schools have been paying an additional 2% for their local options salary.
Yeah.
It's a million dollars. We have to come up with a million dollars. Stan and his team has done, the superintendent has done a very good job of cost-cutting and limiting positions. Some of that money's going to get shrunk away, but we can't be like Durham. You know, what's going on there with their pay thing.
Right.
But on the same token is, you know, that's a million dollars out of the gate before we even start the budget process that we know we have to come up with. It's not like when we're doing revenue neutral, we know, you know, next year we're going to have it equal to what we already know. And I'm just using them as an example. Every single one of our agencies, the price is going up. There's no two ways about it. Cost has gone up. We've seen the locally here, you're at 74% basic increase in your property values. There's places up in the northern end of the county that are over 100% increased.
Wow.
Because it's just the distance people are willing to drive and they get the inventory and the increases on your price on what you make it work has gone up in a lot of cases. You know, the $15 an hour minimum wage. I know we always hear about people talk about fixed incomes. We're all on fixed incomes. It's not like you go to your boss and go, hey, boss, today I'm going to make an extra dollar an hour. Your income is your income unless you go and move to a new job or get some kind of a promotion.
Sorry.
So fixed income is be damned.
My boss doesn't even tell me what my allowance is. Commissioner Wilkins. I just want to say, good idea. Hope we can get it done.
I'm just shooting, swinging for the fences, so. Do you want to run through the rest of your people?
Can we hear from our rec department and see what he thinks about it?
So, oh, rec department-wise, I'm glad you mentioned. I was with Holly Springs and Apex.
He's trying to be discreet, but.
The question I have for y'all is, what's your per-house fee in lieu of for a new dwelling per rec perspective?
Family, you mean family membership?
No, 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 not a membership. I'm going to build a new house in Creedmore. How much do I have to pay for a fee in lieu of for recreation? I'm going to build a new house in Creedmore, and I want to know how much is my fee in lieu of for recreation? What's your, within your ordinances, Holly Springs, Pittsburgh, Apex, if I'm going to go there and build a new house, I'm going to take a checkbook out and I'm going to write a check for $7,500, $8,500, because that's their fee in lieu of. If you're going to build a new house here in Granville County, not in a corporate limits, you're going to pay $500 per house, per dwelling unit, for a fee in lieu of for recreation.
Isn't that an impact fee?
More or less.
Well, we're not allowed to do that. That's illegal.
No.
So the answer, Dennis, I know you're new, is zero.
So, pick some pockets, people.
Dennis, did you want to comment on any of this?
I mean, I think a new facility would be great. I've worked at a couple before, certainly in Durham. As a member of our citizens, like I said, we have citizens that are going after it right now because we don't have it here in Creedmore. So I think it would be great.
Are you going to have the staff to provide for them though? Would you have to, you would have to provide the staff for it though?
I mean, if we own it as a city, yes. That's a significant cost. There's a significant cost.
It would depend on what they wanted us to do, what part of that, and then it may require, may not require your staff. If it's just footy, it may not, but there's a lot more work, maintenance or whatever else.
Hey, that's up key.
You can sign up for the whole kit and the bootle. You can fill yourself if you want.
Yeah, we don't want to do that. All right, thank you. Commissioner May, sorry you had to up and down a little bit there.
No, I'm good. Thank you very much, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, Commissioners, City Manager, fellow Commissioners and Residents. I'm Commissioner May. I'm your district representative, and actually it's a privilege to be yours here and to represent you. Before I get to my comments, which will be brief, we have to have a vision, and we have to have a means of how you're going to get to that vision. So start with a conversation like Commissioner Carron's having today. And the fact is, is that we need to do more. We need to do more throughout the county, we need to do more within the southern end of the county. But the key question we have to come back and ask all ourselves at the end of the day, we can provide a lot. The question is, how much burden of that do you wish to face upon your taxpayer? And those are the key questions that we have to answer and listen to our constituents about. With that being said, and thank you Commissioner, Chair Chairman, for your comments and for your vision. The relationship thing between Granville County and the city of Creedmore can best be described as collaborative partners. Over the last few years, we've seen collaborative projects such as planning and funding for the Southern Senior Center located within Creedmore Community Center. The facility is second to none. We've furthered services by placing DSS facility closely between Creedmore and Butner City Halls. Having this service located closer to our county's growing population significantly improves the accessibility to these services for Southern Granville residents. We now have a Veteran Service Office in Creedmore City Hall to provide further services to our veterans. Thank you, City Manager. Now veterans in the southern part of the county can be served without having to travel to Oxford. We continue to work with Parks and Recreation on our county grant opportunities and receive the funding for recreational opportunities for Creedmore and Southern Granville residents. By working with State Representative Segwasa was a recipient of $35 million to apply to significant projects. And each year, we continue to utilize county resources to pursue funding opportunities for Segwasa. We collectively interact on behalf of our, we have collectively interact. Our community opposed the closing of South Granville High School, which I think that would have been a really big error. And we were successful in that. And we have collaborated with the school system to begin a joint project, which, yes, I'd like to have seen it completed, but it is moving forward. And we will see other joint projects like that, I hope, funded by our board. We have been taking on DOT-related issues such as requesting and having DOT repair and upgrade the apron of the Creedmore Volunteer Fire Department. We have worked on traffic congestion related to relocation of Holly School, and we're thankful of the persistence of Commissioner Koschinski and the Granville County College School staff in overcoming the immediate challenges which were resolved. We have also entered MOUs with Creedmore and having two Creedmore police officers sign our local middle and high school. Commissioner Way, having worked in that field, your comments are dead on. It has to be more than just law enforcement officer there. It has to be someone they can relate to, interact with. And we started talking about putting jurisdiction authority within the schools over a year ago, and thankfully, the county manager and Mr. Winburne are now seeing fruition of that. And we're going to be asking more of you along the lines of that because if an incident occurs, Chief Willis, I'm sure will validate what I'm going to say, if an incident occurs within your jurisdiction, you absolutely want your personnel to be there and be in charge of what goes on there because you will own it, whether it's, regardless if it's in your jurisdiction, you're going to own it. We've entered into an MOU, a mutual fund, the Grant Rider, and the county manager discussed where we're at in that process. And those are the type of things that we keep moving forward with. Currently, the county is awaiting the final approval to have the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization begin a process to conduct the study of Highway 50 and 56 corridors. The project, projected growth, the project will oversee and review the study, the projected growth, transportation routes, and infrastructure needs will be examined. This will aid Granville as we look to our primary transportation and secondary roads. The study will should provide a sound planning template to illuminate realistic approaches on how to plan for the future transportation needs within Southern Granville. We're exploring how we can expand carts and determine what possibilities and opportunities may be available to develop a Creedmore-Butner transportation loop to provide greater accessibility. And we are hopeful the Fire Commission will complete their funding strategy so appropriate recommendations can be made to allocate enhancement funding. Enhancement funding goes beyond other funding lines such as grants or paid staff to man the stations, but provides funding the volunteer fire partners can use to further upgrade their facilities and our apparatuses. And we also hope the Commission will agree to significantly increase the first responder pay to our contracted fire service. This will improve the county's overall emergency services. And also be noted, while the Fire Commission makes recommendations to the Board of Commissioners, the Board of Commissioners, the County Board of Commissioners have the final say. I'll just pop off on a few things that arose during the conversation with the county manager and the chair. We would like to have our economic development office filled sooner. We would like to have the Grant Rider filled sooner. We're taking on the same burden everyone else is taking on. Competitive salaries no longer end along the lines of Granville County. We are amongst Wake and Durham, and with that, people don't have any problem at all in getting in their vehicles and commuting those businesses to make the money they can make there. We have had to take a dividend approach in our county, and I'm certain that you have and will continue to as well, but we're going to have to pay for quality people. That's just the bottom line. And to maintain those people, we're going to have to provide them compensation practices that are worthy of them wanting to stay. So that's our challenge because that brings about something that we've not had to really face or have, or we've not, or we've refused to face the reality of that. And we've thought that we could get by, and we thought we could double-tap. We can no longer have that mentality. And again, that brings an added burden to the taxpayer that we have to be able to explain and have to be able to help them along the way to understand. But more importantly than when I say that, we too are taxpayers. So as I look at this, our tax rates and things of that nature, I just solely don't look at them as a commissioner. I look at it as an individual and my family and how we are going to have to meet any of those challenges. On the EMS, there was increased funding this year, and so we did do something. We increased funding because there are staff positions and we had to maintain those personnel. If you're involved in EMS field at all, you understand that that field is extremely challenged in maintaining personnel, and it's constantly shifting, just like law enforcement's shifting, just like nursing's shifting, just like education's shifting. We did purchase three ambulances, and they are on the road. And we have been meeting often this year with emergencies, EMS, with Granville Health on ways we can develop funding, ways we can, what can we do to increase those services? And how do we do it without overburdening the taxpayer? That being said, FCI Butner takes a lot of our time when they call and they have to route someone, we have to send an ambulance over there. They, as you know, they have a healthcare facility there. So every time they need to take someone there, that ambulance, that goes. Takes us out of pocket. So we've challenged our folks to work with them, Granville Health to work with them, see what we can do to better that situation. I think Mr. Carron has explained how they've come up with a, done their ambulance within house that can help with doing that. We did seek to gain additional ambulance services in the county. We actually upgraded our ordinance for that. And frankly, if I think county management, knowing we didn't have any of that to meet those needs. So Granville Health has taken that initiative, and I think that will better the EMS and help us. And I'm sure our board will look at further ways that we can improve that this coming year. So with that being said, I just thank you so much for allowing me to speak today. I thank you, Commissioner Carron, for your courage to be innovative. And again, I don't say this in any slight to anyone in the county, but we have challenged our county manager. We have, and we speak often on our board, that we, in the southern end of the county, and I don't mean any disrespect to anyone, but we're growing, and the services need to grow in proportion to our growth, just like the fire tax and the enhancement and the, need to be based upon equitable, not equality. And so with that, I'll take any questions. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Way?
Commissioner May, thank you for coming in today. And I look forward to seeing what benefits with the new tax assessment's going to do for funding with the Fire Commission. You were here this morning, I believe, when I was, when the fire chief was here, and I was telling you about the need for an upgraded fire station for 24/7 coverage, especially for this end of the county. Wake County Commissioners just approved $8 million for Northern Wake to build a brand-new fire station at the Granville County-Wake County line. Eight million dollars, just like that, to build a new fire station. I know that they have a huge tech base compared to us, and I completely understand that. But that just goes to how robust the Fire Commission can be as far as coming to life and recognizing the needs in the communities to increase the fire stations and other abilities, departments that might need equipment or trucks. Barbecue chicken plates and Brunswick stews is not going to be able to keep keeping us alive. So we appreciate what the county's doing. I look forward to what the Fire Commission can do, especially with the funds, and thank you for that part of the aspect.
Just to follow up on that, we were one of three or two counties last to enter into a fire tax. Far overdue. I know our board had been working on it some capacity, I think it's around 2017. And so Commissioner Carron was leading that charge at that point. But we did get across the threshold line in 2021. I attend meetings often with folks from Wake County, Durham County, and much larger counties. And I often amaze at the robust revenues they have to do the projects that they do. Just go look off the new high school in Durham, a northern high school that looks like a university, a small piece of a university campus. The reality of it is that we have to deal with the topography we're in and the economy we're in and the, where we're at and put it in proportion to how we can best do that. And so I'm hopeful, as you are, that we can do the tired tax process, which, you know, it's tough for me to say, because I consider it more like a fire fee because all too long, $20 in the boot and a Brunswick stew, and the citizen thought that, hey, my fireman's sitting in the station, and my house starts on fire, they're going to jump up and they're going to be right there. That was never really the reality. And unfortunately, that mentality did not get our fire services the necessary equipment or funding that they needed. What's even further challenging is that volunteers nationally are dissipating, and they don't live in their community more. When we had volunteer fire departments, when Mr. Way probably first started, people would come from their fields, local business, and they would jump on the truck. It's not the case now. They live in Raleigh, they work in Raleigh, or they work in Durham, or they work out of the county. So we have a lot of challenges. I agree with you. We will do what we can to enhance and funding, Commissioner Way. Look at those things like that. The county manager, along with the Fire Commission, will bring us recommendations. He will review the recommendations. He will make recommendations to us. And of course, we hope that enhanced funding, if it's distributed equitable, will meet the needs in proportionality to the fire departments as the formula is designed. And I think that's the best way to do it because I believe that's the fairest way we can do it. Thank you.
All right. Not hearing any more questions or comments. Commissioner May, I appreciate it. I appreciate the attendance of all our county commissioners and Tim and Jimmy and y'all. Thank y'all so much for coming. And at this time, lunch.